Madam Clerk, can you call the roll, please?
Counselor Kane.
Present.
Counselor Crowell.
Present.
Counselor DeBona.
Present.
Counselor Harris.
Present.
Counselor Mahoney.
Present.
Counselor McCarthy.
Present.
Counselor Palmucci. Counselor Phelan.
Present.
President Liang.
Present.
Eight members, you have a quorum.
Thank you. We can all just have a moment of silence for all of the women and men serving, both here and abroad, as well as keeping in mind all of those who are still serving on the front lines during this pandemic. Thank you. Madam Clerk, could you be the open meeting law, please?
Pursuant to the open meeting law, any person may make an audio or video recording of this public meeting, or may transmit the meeting through any medium. Attendees are therefore advised that such recordings or transmissions are being made, whether perceived or unperceived, by those present and are deemed acknowledged impermissible.
Thank you. And in accordance with Governor Charles D. Baker's March 10, 2020 orders suspending certain provisions of the Open Meeting Law General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 20, the Quincy City Council is holding this council meeting via remote video conferencing services and is being aired on Quincy Access Television, QA TV, Channel QA TV 9, Government Access. Madam Clerk, first, I'm on the agenda, please.
Honoring of COVID-19 heroes, Brewster Ambulance.
Thank you. Counselor Crowell.
Thank you, Madam President. Through you to the council. You know, obviously, we've been spending the last couple city council meetings recognizing various organizations who have been standouts throughout the COVID-19 pandemic. You know, we spent some time paying our respect to both the Quincy Fire Department, as well as the Quincy Police Department, as well as the City of Quincy's Parks Department. And tonight, we have the opportunity to acknowledge the work that has been put by Brewster Ambulance. As we all know, a very local company to all of us here on the Zoom this evening, they do hold three satellite, or three locations in the city of Quincy, and roughly partner on, and Chris, you can correct me if I'm wrong on the math, but 14,000 responded calls per year. Obviously, their partnership with our local Quincy Police Department and Quincy Fire Department is seamless. But you talk about frontline service. It goes without saying locally, but what I found to be extremely interesting, particularly Brewster, is how they expand, you know, the service that they offer to the constituents really throughout the Commonwealth. And they were responsible, one of the parties responsible for citing the testing site for first responders located out at Gillette Stadium. They've also been into various high-impact zones, such as those penitentiaries throughout the Commonwealth. So again, the body of work that the men and women of Brewster Ambulance has put forward in the past six, seven months feels like an eternity, has been outstanding. So we're lucky enough to have with us here this evening, not only one of the members of the senior leadership team from Brewster Ambulance, Chris DeBona, but Chris is also a lifelong resident of the city of Quincy and actually a member, resident in my district too. So appreciate it for the work that your organization's done, Chris. I don't know who else, if anyone is on this evening from your organization, but my colleagues, I just want to take a moment and just say, you know, we recognize the hard work that you do, and we certainly appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you very much. It's very easy for us to do the work in Quincy, and it clearly is a public safety endeavor for all of us between the police and the fire departments. We really appreciate your support, especially on the city end. And where I mentioned it comes easy for us is we're designing, delivering medicine, and transporting patients in the city that we know and we grew up with. So we have more of a drive there, a vested interest, to provide, you know, some of the best healthcare in the city, and combine that with civil unrest and the closure of the recent medical center, you know, as well as Norwood Hospital and the hospital out in Natick. You know, we've been faced with some challenges as well. So we do this for seven communities, but Quincy's close to ours. So thank you very much for the recognition. It has been a long year. I know everybody's tired, a little COVID fatigued, but please keep up the good work, masks, and, you know, social distancing is going to be very important coming into this flu season combined with COVID. So just be careful, be diligent.
Thank you so much, Chris, and thank you, Counselor Crowell, for bringing this in front of us. I want to open it up to my colleagues for any comments that they'd like to make. Counselor DeBona?
Thank you, Madam President. Thank you, Counselor Crowell, for bringing this about. Chris, good to see you tonight. You know, you guys have done a fantastic job, you know, George and Mark Brewster and your entire staff over there at Brewster Ambulance, working together collaboratively with Quincy Police, Quincy Fire, as our first responders on the front lines. We've had both of those other departments on here in the last few meetings, and it's good to see that you guys are on here now. And, you know, just thank you for all your hard work and your openness and willingness to just talk to us at all times. So I'm looking forward to working together with you through this winter season, obviously with the flu season coming, and hopefully we can get this vaccine underway. I see here some positive news coming on the TV set, which is, which is hopefully, I guess we could say, we're just hoping that this COVID-19 can be squashed. So thank you so much, Chris. Good to see you tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Phelan?
Thank you, Madam President. Chris, just a great job that Brewster does. I happened to be working for the city when Brewster came on board, and the amounts, I don't think people realize, the amount of additional services we got from the service when we switched over was fantastic. And in my dealings with everyone from your company, it was the incredible professionalism and the way they carried themselves. And I'm very proud and glad that we're recognizing you for this award. I realize the COVID has been putting everyone to the max, particularly our people and our first responders. When we bring in the first responders, you guys are right there all the time. The support you give to both the police and fire over in the area is just fantastic.
Thank you. It was exciting to build for you guys. Thank you.
So I can say nothing but kudos about you. I work with you professionally with the city, and what you're doing now on the other side, now I'm on the other side. And thank you from all the people in the city of Quincy that you serve. Thank you particularly on Ward 4. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you so much, Counselor. I just want to go through my screens here and see if any of my other colleagues had anything they wanted to say. Counselor Palmucci?
Thank you, Madam President. I just wanted to echo my colleagues thanking Brewster Ambulance for all that they've done throughout the pandemic. I'll admit, I was happy with Fallon Ambulance Service that we had for years and years. Didn't hurt that their headquarters is located in Ward 4. But I was optimistic about Brewster when they got the contract, and I really must say, I've just been incredibly impressed. They far exceeded the expectations that I had for them coming in. And just to touch upon what Counselor Phelan said, the increase in the level of service that we've received has been significant. The technology that you've added to service Quincy residents is amazing, and the level of support that you've brought to the community. And I know you guys just opened, well, probably not just, but not too long ago, opened up a brand-new headquarters right in Waymouth. So it's nice to see you guys making that, you know, that investment in the area to improve your services. So just wanted to weigh in and thank you. And if I could, I don't get to talk to folks from Brewster all that often. I talk to fire, police, and those guys quite a bit. But if you wouldn't mind, what's been the most difficult challenge during the pandemic for you guys? Has it been staffing and keeping people, keeping your staff safe, or replacing folks when they're sick? What's been, what's it been like for you guys in terms of just dealing with day-to-day things? What's been difficult?
Yeah, no, great question, Counselor. Quite frankly, it's been the psych-social impact to our members, right? Folks are very confused on what to do, what to do next. You know, initially, we were monitoring some of these, some of the chatter that was coming out of China and Europe early. So we were very fortunate to kind of be ahead of PPE shortages and things that got a lot of folks in the jam. But I would say that it's been consistent throughout the year, the psych-social impact kind of happening with our EMTs and paramedics, as well as our comm center, on, you know, how they need to approach these patients, how they need to act. And this changes, you guys, you know, watch the news as well as us, it changes daily, if not hourly, on recommendations. So it's been one of those things to, very difficult to keep up with. But the communication between Commissioner Jones, Chief Jackson, Chief Keenan, and folks at City Hall have been unbelievable. And quite frankly, our ownership has been just stellar with this. And what I mean by that is, I can't tell you how many times I've gone to the well and said, hey, we need to do this. And the answer has never been no. And the same thing on the city side. They just take it, run with it, you know what you need to do, and let's just get it done. So thank you.
Well, thank you. You guys are a crucial part of the operation here, keeping folks in Quincy safe. So we thank you for being on the front lines of that and everything you've done during the pandemic. Keep it up. Be safe.
Thank you, Counselor.
Thank you, Counselor. And let me just do, Chris, just bear with me, I'm going to do just one last roll of the screens here to see if any other folks would like to speak. Okay, with that, Chris, I just obviously want to echo the sentiments of my colleagues. You know, we're really grateful to Counselor Crowell for bringing you in front of us tonight. We've had the opportunity now to have all of our first responders in front of us. And I'll say to you what I've said to them, right, is that the work doesn't stop in and out of a pandemic. You know, it only increases to a capacity that I can't even imagine, you know, what you guys are going through. So I'm really grateful to you as well. And again, echo the sentiments of my colleagues, and grateful that you're joining us tonight so we have the opportunity to express our gratitude for everything you've done. So again, please be safe out there. And yeah, just know that we're here to support you guys with whatever you need.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. Madam Clerk, next item on the agenda, please.
Number one, 2020-164 Order of Municipal Aggregation.
Thank you. Counselor Kane?
Thank you, Madam President. I'm going to defer to Mr. Walker, who I believe is going to introduce Shelley Dean, who's going to give us an update on this project that we approved a while ago.
Great, thank you. Chris?
For you, Madam President, as Counselor Kane said, introduce Shelley Dean, our Energy and Sustainability Manager.
Excellent. Shelley?
Terrific. Thank you so much. Thank you, Madam President, and other city counselors. I want to thank the council for the opportunity to speak to you tonight and to begin the public review process of our draft aggregation plan. While the public review process and input in the plan is required by the Department of Public Utilities, it's also something that we really welcome. We appreciate any feedback we can get, and any feedback we get will be submitted as part of our draft plan to the Department of Public Utilities. So this program, as mentioned, has been before the council in the past, in earlier stages. But I want to remind folks who may be tuning in now, who hadn't tuned in in the past, that the Quincy Community Electricity Aggregation Program will result in a new default electricity supplier for Quincy residents and small businesses. And by bundling the electricity usage for Quincy residents and businesses, we expect to achieve a few things. The first is to bring stable pricing of electricity supply. National Grid changes its electricity supply rates every six months. When we go out to bid, depending on the market conditions, we may be able to lock in a rate for up to three years. The second thing that we hope to achieve is to provide savings, or at least comparable pricing to National Grid's supply rates. National Grid, as I mentioned, changes their supply rates every six months. So because our term is expected to be longer than six months, we can't guarantee savings, and that's a disclaimer that we need to make. But I also want to recognize the fact that communities that participate in this program generally have experienced savings for their residents and for their small businesses. The third thing is that we are including a higher amount of renewable energy than is required. The state each year changes the amount of clean energy that must be provided. And this year, the rate the state requires, 16% of electricity must come from renewable energy. We are aiming to get 10% more. So we're at, you know, if we were approved immediately, and if we were to go out to bid immediately, we would expect to get 26% of our electricity supplied by clean energy sources. And the reason why that's important is because the extra renewable energy, which is generated by wind turbines and large solar photovoltaic arrays, allow those developers to know that there's a market for their clean energy, and enables them to build their projects. And then finally, what our program will do is we'll provide consumer protections. I know that many Quincy residents and businesses have in the past signed up with alternate suppliers and sometimes experienced hidden fees, or cancellation charges, or things like that. And we will be vetting suppliers to guarantee that that won't happen. So there will be no hidden fees, there will be no cancellation penalties for residents. What I want to do now is introduce John O'Rourke. John is, John works for Good Energy. He is their municipal director and marketing director. And green energy, I'm sorry, Good Energy. Good Energy is the company that we selected to assist us in this process. So, John, if you want to take over now, that would be great.
Thank you, Shelley. Madam President, city councillors, thank you for letting me come before you tonight to help show you where we are on the program. I am going to try to share my screen to give you a little bit of a timeline here. Can everybody see my screen?
Yep, you're good.
Yes.
Everybody's good? Okay. And I certainly want to thank Chris and Shelley. They've been great to work with. We're moving through this process as fast as we can, considering some of the limitations that we've had over the last seven or eight months with the COVID vaccine, with the COVID virus, rather. We're at the point now, as Shelley mentioned, to start a public review process. And essentially, what we're doing tonight is announcing that that process starts. And essentially, during that process, there are plans that are available for the residents to review, both on the website, as well as in, at City Hall and at the library. The Department of Public Utilities, as Shelley said, requires that you do at least a two-week public review process for the residents to make comments on the aggregation documents. At this point, it's scheduled to start tonight and to finish with a public hearing on December the 7. And again, during that time, there will be comments made by residents that will be submitted. After we go through this, hopefully on the 7, the plan will be approved by the council, and it will be submitted to the Department of Public Utilities. The regulatory process, at this point, we hope, is going to move a little quicker than it has been in the recent past, because Quincy's plan is one of the first plans that is being submitted under the new format. Essentially, they wanted a lot more information in the plan. And essentially, in the old format, it was about 100 pages long. With this new format, it's about 300 pages long. So hopefully, all the information they need is there for their review, and they can get through the approval process quick. Once we get through that process, we can go out to a competitive bid for approval. And anytime the city is ready to go out, we can do that. At that same point, we start to ramp up our public outreach. We do a lot of educational materials, a lot of contact with residents, to make sure that we're reaching all of the populations in Quincy, to make sure they understand the program. And then obviously, once the program is up, we take care of the management of the program, monitoring the program, reporting to city officials to make sure everything is running smoothly. This is just a, let me see. This is just what happens during this process, this public review. It's announced tonight. The aggregation plan summary is going to be on your website. It's very simply much of what Shelley said. The review. Comments can be submitted through email, in writing, or at the public hearing on the 7. We're going to, we posted a notice of the public hearing on the city website, so everybody knows when that is. You finish this process by holding the public hearing. You record any oral comments at that time, at that meeting, in the minutes. And all comments become part of the documents that are submitted to the Department of Public Utilities. At this point. The plan is available electronically on QuincyCEA.com, and at the City Hall and the library. It's also, feedback can be given through email to electricity@quincyMA.gov. Written comments can be submitted at electricity@quincyMA.gov. And oral comments can be submitted at the public hearing on December 7. Again, written comments can be sent to Shelley at Stavel Avenue in Quincy. And essentially, this is a simple process. Generally, there aren't a lot of comments. But as I say, all of the comments that come in from residents are basically put in the documents, and then it's sent to the DPU. They start their approval process. And as I say, hopefully, that process will be faster than it has been in the recent past, because we're giving them a tremendous amount of information. Hopefully, it goes through quickly. Are there any questions?
Thank you so much, Sean. I'm going to go ahead and stop sharing your screen for a moment, if that's all right, just so I can go and see folks, if they're raising their hands. So just give me a moment here.
Sure.
Thank you. So with that, I'm just going to open it up to my colleagues with any questions that they might have. Counselor Kane?
I think we're just going to put this in the Community Engagement Committee, so that we can schedule this meeting for December 7 for public comment. But want to thank Shelley, Chris from the mayor's office, and Mr. O'Rourke for the presentation. I'm glad this has come so far. I know that folks are very excited to have options, optionality for renewable energy. And even in Massachusetts right now, there's so much going on in renewable energy development. I know that over the coming years, there's some odd 8,000 megawatts of offshore wind coming online. Distributed generation for solar power has seen record highs in utilities in the southeast, especially where we are. I don't even know what to do with that electricity. So this is a great project to add to that portfolio for the city of Quincy and its residents. Thank you very much.
No, thank you. And thank you for your leadership on this. So with that, it's going to be moving into the Community Engagement Committee. Again, just doing a quick check. Does anybody have anything they'd like to say, or any questions they'd ask before we move this into committee? All right, great. So we'll go ahead and put that into the Community Engagement Committee and schedule a public hearing accordingly. Madam Clerk, next item on the agenda, please.
Number two, 2020-165, an ordinance amended municipal code adding to Chapter 25 Departments, Article 11.
Waive the reading.
Department of Social Justice.
Waive the reading, Counselor Palmucci?
Thank you. Madam President, as you know, you, myself, Counselor Mahoney, Counselor Crowell, hosted a series of, a community discussion series over the summer called Be the Change, that focused on listening and talking with members of the Quincy community around issues of race, ethnicity, equity, and justice. Personally, I found the experience to be very rewarding, hearing about people's experiences in Quincy, people who are very different from me, and have had very different life experiences than I have. We spent, collectively, we spent hours talking, sharing, listening, in a very nonjudgmental way. And personally, I was struck by just how unique our city is, and the challenges facing our city, based on what transpired in those discussions. Folks who participated had many positive things to say about our city, including our police department and our schools. There were also comments and ideas about how we, as a community and a government, could be more welcoming and inclusive for our fellow residents. There were a handful of suggestions that people made that actually, it turned out, we already have implemented in the city. Things such as foreign language services for, or translation services for parents to use when communicating with school staff about their family member, their child, their student, or de-escalation training for our police officers. These things are already happening in Quincy, but most residents don't know that. Most residents who participate in this discussion didn't know that, and I suspect most residents across the city don't know that. And that's in part because we don't have a central office that coordinates, tracks, reports, and works on these efforts on a regular basis. And that's what this ordinance seeks to do. It seeks to create a department head that will do just that, a position that will be, in addition to coordinating, tracking, and reporting on these efforts, the position will also be mandated with exploring new opportunities and broadening the reach of our current existing program. The city currently does a lot, but there's always more that we can do. We all want to live in a city that's welcoming, inclusive, and diverse, one where opportunity and justice aren't determined based on skin color or accent. We are the most diverse city council to ever serve this city. And that's not because of me, McCarthy, and some of my colleagues, but we are the most diverse city council that's ever served this city. And I have no doubt that the way that I want my family, the people that I love and care about, to be treated in our city is no different than the way any of you want your family to be treated. Quincy's a great city, and I think we can make it even better for every resident. And I believe that that starts now. And I hope that you'll join me in supporting this. I move that this ordinance be referred to the Ordinance Committee and Public Safety Committees for the hearing.
Thank you. So we have a motion to move this to Ordinance and Public Safety.
I'll second it.
Seconded by Counselor DeBona. Counselor DeBona, did you want to speak on this?
Yes, I would if I could.
Oh, yes.
Thank you, Madam President. Just to piggyback on Counselor Palmucci, I know what it feels like to be of color. And, you know, I think this is a great opportunity for us to work together with the mayor, also with the school committee collaboratively, all three bodies of government, the mayor, the administration, the city council, and the school committee. That's with this Director of Social Justice and Equality, where they have a collaboration of a development. And then also, I think that's really important is the creating a database, having something to go back on, having an oversight of some of the folks that want to weigh in on how they feel about in the city. Over the last 24 hours, I've gotten over 30 emails with people in support of this, and reaching out to us as a body, as a city council. And they want to be involved. They want to be involved in the discussions, as what Counselor Palmucci said. And us to work together collaboratively on getting some of the words, some of the feelings of basically the social justice inequality, and move our city forward, and using a proactive approach, rather than a reactive approach, to what's going on and how people feel. And I think this is a move in the right direction, and that's why I'm happy to co-sponsor it with you and President Liang. So I want to thank So I want to thank everybody for weighing in. I want to thank all the people that have reached out to us, myself and the counselors, with your support. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Counselor.
Thank you, thank you, Madam President. I'm not going to go in much because this will go to committee and every hearing. But in reading the ordinance, which I think is a great idea we brought in, it reminds me of years ago when we had the Equal Opportunity Administrator who worked for the city. It was something back in the 80s and 90s. And, you know, some things got done, some things obviously didn't fall through all the way. But I look at it as a way to unite people around the city. And I'm for anything that is going to help keep the city united and people working together and working for a common good and a common cause. So I look forward to the hearings. But I also read a lot of the job description. And that was kind of the job description that I don't know why it was ever done away with. I left the city to work for the county in the early 2000s. When I came back, the job wasn't there. So I see that there's a need for it, and I commend my council colleagues who sat and did all the listening. And I'm not going to go much farther. I'm just going to say at this point, like everyone else, I got a lot of emails, a lot of people concerned and backing this. And so I think it's a good idea. I think it's a thing we got to explore and debate and come to a conclusion on. But I will say that this was something that was with the city for several years. Where, when, why it went, I don't know. But it seems like in the times we're living in, it might be a very good idea right now. So thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Counselor. I'm just going to scroll through here and see if any of my... Oh, Counsel McCarthy?
Thank you, President Liang. Right now, I'm not going to support it. I read the job description, and I know that Counsel Palmucci, yourself, Counsel Mahoney, and I think Counsel Kroll had those series of phone calls. I don't know any of the information that came back from those phone calls. I look at it and say to myself, I keep asking myself as I try to think this is for Quincy. And I have always been under the impression in Quincy that we do a pretty good job across the board. It's something that I look at, especially coming up to 2021, with a lot of budget concerns for us to be adding another body to the mix where we haven't got a good, clear look at 2021. And I need time to possibly talk to my colleagues about all the phone calls you people took and talk about what came out of that. The only thing I saw in the Quincy Sun was a brief article on a couple of comments. I think Counsel Palmucci mentioned it about foreign language. I didn't see anything about de-escalation. So I haven't heard or seen anything in regards to any large issues in Quincy. So I won't be supporting it. I know we're going to put it in committee, and I know there'll be discussions. So I hope I get more out of that. But when I look at the lineup we have here right now, I think Quincy's in pretty good shape. And I don't think it's a job at this time that Quincy needs. So thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counsel Mahoney?
Sorry about the "thank you," Counsel President. So I appreciate this coming before us. And I will say that last week was a challenging week for me, so I wasn't able to really put my hands around this and get my arms around it. But realizing that this is going into ordinance and that this is going to be a conversation that we can all have, I hope we can all come to it with open minds to listen to what the opportunities that could be there for the city. Something that we can't actually add to the budget. This would be something that the mayor would have to embrace and add to the budget. But that doesn't mean that we can't add an ordinance that's suggesting that this is something that the city does need. Now, why I think the city needs it is because I did serve on the school committee. And when I would ask questions like when we were going to hire people, you know, how did we go about to look at those things? And they would say that they had a drawer full of resumes. And it was very disconcerting to me that that's how we were doing things. And I know that I also put in ordinance the opportunity to put our positions online so that we can see who's being hired and make sure that we're making the right decisions. This is just an additional qualification to be able to make sure that we're serving the full population of the city of Quincy. Now, when I looked at this, I did get concerned because we're in COVID. And to suggest that we were going to hire somebody full-time when we don't know what's ahead of us is concerning. But at the same time, these are conversations that have to happen because we have to be able to move our city forward in a positive and a productive way. And like Counsel Palmucci mentioned, we did have a series of conversations, and they were healthy conversations. And they were on Zoom, and everybody was welcome to join. And what came out of it was that more people want to know more about what happens in the city of Quincy. Really transparency was really the message that we received from many people who were talking to us. As Counsel Muji mentioned, many of the things that we discussed, we already have happening here in the city of Quincy. And that's where the benefit could come, is allowing people to know what we are doing and recognizing the things that we may not be doing well so that we can actually make implementations to make those things more transparent and more accurate for the people who live here in the city of Quincy. So I look forward to having these conversations, and I look forward to people being open-minded about those conversations. But the most important thing is we can't fund the position. So that would be something that the administration would have to come back to do. But this would be an ordinance that would be on our books suggesting that this is the right direction for us to go in, when and if we can fund it. So I think rather than focusing on the cost of what something's going to be, let's be open-minded to the conversation and see where it brings us. So thank you very much, Counsel Palmucci, Counsel Liang, Counsel Kroll, for being part of those conversations with us this summer. And thank you very much, Counsel DeBona, for joining this ordinance tonight. So thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. I'm just going to do a quick scroll to see if anybody else would like to speak. Okay, with that, I do have something I'd like to say if folks will entertain me. Obviously, I wanted to start by thanking my colleagues, Counsel Palmucci and Counsel DeBona, for joining me and sponsoring this ordinance. You know, our community is one of opportunity and progress, but as we move forward, we need to make sure that we move forward together as one community and one city. We need to make sure that we aren't drawing a dividing line between each other because when that line's drawn, it does a disservice to our city. Each of us on the council come from different backgrounds, different experiences, and our own personal experiences of injustice, inequality, and diversity, just like every resident in the city. And as your representatives, it was critical for us to hear from you, the residents of Quincy, about your perspectives on all of this. And so this summer, I, along with my fellow colleagues, Counsel Kroll, Counsel Mahoney, and Counsel Palmucci, held a series of community forums open to all residents to talk about their concerns, their frustrations, their own experiences, and their viewpoints when it comes to equality and diversity in our city. And this ordinance is a result of our numerous meetings and forums with residents across the city around diversity and inclusion efforts within our city. The goal of this new department is to be a bridge between every resident in Quincy and the work that's being done in our city government so that each and every resident can feel confident that our city government is working with them and for them. And I do truly believe that this is a great step forward in ensuring that everyone who calls Quincy home feels valued and heard. And yes, this is a step, right? It's a step, it's the first step that we're taking. We're going to be moving it into committee, and we're going to be having hearings on it. But the fact that we can come together as a body to have this conversation tonight, to say we're just introducing something to put into committee for discussion, is a huge step forward. And, you know, I've spoken to a number of people about this, but not everyone, and certainly not publicly like this. But there are more days than I can count where, growing up in the city, I've been called chink or guke, or I've been told to speak English because I'm speaking Chinese to my grandparents. And to this day, when I have gone out door knocking, I've had people ask me, "Where are you from?" And when I say Quincy, that's not enough. And they probe and probe and probe until I say, "Well, my family's from China." And they respond by saying, "Oh, okay." And for those of you who don't experience that, that's okay. But there are a number of us out there that do have those types of experiences. And mine isn't like every other Asian person in this community. And mine certainly is not like every other black and brown person in this community, or any white person that might experience racism as well. But the fact is, we all bring our own experiences. And as your representatives, to have this conversation, I would hope is a sign that we acknowledge that each of your experiences are valuable, and we honor that. So I am really proud to have this in front of us as a body. I'm really grateful to every single one of my colleagues and their perspectives and their experiences and their viewpoints that they bring to this. I think it's an important conversation. I value all of the perspectives. And with that, I will just go back to the fact that we have a motion to move this to ordinance by Counsel Palmucci, seconded by Counsel DeBona. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Okay, thank you. So we have the motion passes to move to ordinance committee. Madam Clerk, next item on the agenda, please.
Next item is number three, 2020-135, a resolve seeking an update from bond counsel.
Thank you. This was introduced by Counsel Mahoney and Counsel Phelan to get an update. So I just wanted to defer to them quickly before we move on to Cinder. So between Counsel Mahoney and Counsel Phelan, did either of you want to speak before we have Cinder come on? Counsel Phelan?
Yeah, it was actually Counsel Mahoney's original thing. I did jump on, but I commend her for, we're coming up to a lot of bonding. We get the new police station, there's things we're doing. You know, all I think great things. But I think the fact that we're going to ask and get what our position is, I think is... So I commend my colleague, Counsel Mahoney, for bringing it in and altering.
Great, thank you. Counsel Mahoney?
I just want to say thank you. I want to thank Cinder McNerney for being here tonight, and it's nice to meet you. I'm sorry we're not in council chambers, so I can meet you in person. I've been on the council for three years, and this is my first presentation with you, so I'm looking forward to it. I will say that one of the things that I was concerned with, just so you know, is just that we're in the middle of a global pandemic, and there's a lot of uncertainties in most people's financials. And we have a lot of things that are on the agenda or the administration's agenda for how to move our city forward. But we just want to make sure we're doing it in a way that we are considering the situation where we are, both as a city and then also as we're all trying to maneuver through the uncertainty that's in front of us. So I look forward to your presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Mahoney. With that, Cinder, go ahead and turn over to you. Did we lose her?
I think she's still muted.
Can you... Hi, can you hear me? Yes. So for those of you who haven't met me before, I'm Cinder McNerney. I'm a managing director at Hilltop Securities in Boston. I've come before the city council before, and I just want to make clear, I'm not bond counsel to the city. What I am is bond counsel would render legal opinions on the debt, the city issues, and other legal answer, other legal matters. I'm the financial advisor to the city. I help the city understand how the rating agencies look at them. Because the rating agencies won't give advice. So I look in terms of, our primary function is to give advice on the issuance and structure of debt and to make sure that nothing that the city's doing in that regard would compromise its credit or its goals. And so I can speak, I think, closely to how the rating agencies think about the city's credit. And it's always a moving target situation. Circumstances are always changing, so the dynamics are... It's a number of different metrics, and they're changing all the time. COVID has, for example, put a big cloud over the municipal market. There's a negative outlook by the rating agencies, both Moody's and Standard and Poor's on all municipal bonds. That negative outlook, it's out there. It doesn't mean that it's a negative outlook on the city's credit rating itself, but it is a negative outlook on the sector, the whole municipal bond sector, taxable and tax exempt municipal bonds, and all the issuers. So with that said, I don't really have a... I don't have a formal presentation. I'd be happy to do that at some point, but I just want to talk about the city's credit. And I want to make clear, just because a lot of what I say reflects how the rating agencies think, it doesn't mean that just because the rating agencies think something, it doesn't mean it's right for the city of Quincy or for any other community. What's right for the city of Quincy is a deliberative, you know, effort on the part of the city to figure out what it wants, what its goals are, what its vision is for itself, and what it is willing to do and what it can do. With that said, the city of Quincy is an extremely strong credit. You've got a tax base of $17, at least $17 billion at this point. You're extremely well managed. You've got strong financial results. You're currently rated AA+ by Standard and Poor's. That's one notch below the highest credit rating of AAA. You've got an unused, you don't really need to issue debt with more than one rating. You've got an unused rating by Moody's right now. That's two notches below that, it's a AA3. The city's not using that, but it is unusual to see such a disparity between two different rating agencies and their views on the city. The city has a lot of debt outstanding. It's got a lot of unfunded pension liability, and it's got a lot of OPEB liability. I think you've got $500 million worth of debt outstanding in the form of bonds and notes, probably split half and half between bonds and notes. And you've got another billion dollars of unfunded pension and unfunded OPEB liability. And your pension system and your debt, your pension, your unfunded, your pension, your OPEB, and your debt is all considered as your debt profile. And it's currently rated the weakest. It could be rated by Standard and Poor's, which is the rating agency that rates you the highest. It's... The debt profile would have you be a AA-rated credit. It's because of everything else the city is doing that you're a AA+, including the amount of $30 million of unused levy capacity under the lower levy limit of prop 2.5. So when you look at municipal credit and the choices that you're making in terms of spending and policies, reserves, debt issuance, it's a balancing act. And it is for every municipality. It's a different balancing act for Quincy than it is for other municipalities. The primary factors, and you probably know this, but I'll just mention it to put what I'm saying in context, the primary factors have to do with the local economy, the national economy, the management of the city, the financial performance of the city, the debt profile of the city, and the institutional framework in which Massachusetts municipalities operate, what laws are required. For example, you're required to have a balanced budget. You have very, the way you are allowed to issue debt is very conservative. If you want to do something different, you need special legislation like you have for the DIF debt. I can say it right now with regard to the DIF debt that the rating agency doesn't view that necessarily as... It doesn't view it as self-supporting, even though it's designed and it's planned to be issued over time as supporting itself with new growth revenues that would come out of the DIF district. But the rating agency, because it's not an enterprise activity, and it's in the general fund, they treat it, they don't treat it as self-supporting. But, you know, they know that it's supposed to support itself as it rolls out over the next 10 and 15 years. A good percentage of the outstanding short-term debt that the city has outstanding is DIF district debt. It's outstanding in the form of bond anticipation notes. And there's actually a DIF plan that would roll it out as the revenues are produced and also as required under legislation that allows it to be issued and rolled as short-term debt. So when the city council thinks about the debt outstanding, the DIF is a little bit separate. It's separate in my mind, too, because it's self-supporting, even though the rating agency views it as contributing to the weak metric that they assign to the city for its debt profile. So they're looking at your outstanding bonds, your outstanding notes, the unfunded pension, and the unfunded OPEB liability. When they say that your debt profile, which only counts as all of that, as 10% of the rating, is very weak. They view your economy as very strong. They view your management as strong. They view your financial performance as very strong, or your financial flexibility, I should say. Your financial performance, which has to do with whether or not you've got a structurally balanced budget where your revenues equal your expenditures, they view that as adequate. It hasn't produced the kinds of surpluses that they'd like to see, which would fall down to the bottom line and add to reserve position. They view the unused levy capacity right now that's grown up to $30 million because of all the growth that's taken property tax growth, assessed value growth in the base. They view that as kind of like another reserve. They don't give you as much credit as they would if you actually taxed some of it and set it aside. But it's there, and the city's shown willingness to use it when it's needed to. So they give you credit for that. And the city's shown willingness to use it when it's needed to. So they give you credit for that, which is all of everything, other than the debt, which I said is counts for 10% of the rating. The, the rest of everything brings you up to the double A plus. But just because it's double A plus right now, it doesn't mean that you can maintain that going forward. There's been tremendous uncertainty in the market on account of Covid and on account of the massive amounts of unfunded liabilities around the country generally with pensions and OPEB and the assumptions about the investment of those assets related to those programs and/or whether or not plans exist to fund them at all, or if it's just pay as you go and see where you get. So the, uh, econo, the economy, which is a very strong, counts for 30% of the rating. Management is 20% of the rating. Financial reserves is 10% of the rating and, um, so one of the things about, which I think the primary question is, the city of Quincy has a lot of debt authorized, but not yet issued on its books, including all the DIF bands, which will get issued as bonds at some point. There's a couple of things going on right now. Interest rates are at hundred-year historic lows. The city has just in a month ago issued a refunding bond, uh, on bonds issued, I think it was in two thousand and eleven, thirty-year bonds to call in what's callable and at lower inch and, and refund it at lower rates. The city saved almost five million dollars in savings by doing that deal based on current rates. They sold, I think it was twenty-year debt at a 1.35%. The city has other debt that it's looking at whether or not it should accelerate that to take advantage of rate. When you have as much debt as the city's contemplating, there is an opportunity to save tens of millions of dollars in interest cost by accelerating some of that debt. We've seen it across the board in Massachusetts, across the board in the United States. There's been unprecedented, unprecedented volumes of debt being brought to market, in particular ahead of the election. It's, there's a lot of volatility in market. We're taking a look at what is going on with the election. Not just the final results, but how, uh, the markets will react, but not just how they'll react this week, how they're going to react as the city prepares itself and positions itself to consider accelerating some of the debt already authorized and on the city's books. One of the things about bringing on more debt for the city to consider, you know, you, you can bring on, I think one of the questions, and you didn't ask it yet, but it's how much more debt can the city issue? Well, the city can issue, I think, what it wants if there's a plan, both with regard to how to afford to pay it all back, but also a plan to mitigate the idea and the fact that you have more debt than a lot of other municipalities do. And part of that is because all the DIF debt counts as debt that's not self-supporting, the way the rating agency thinks about it. The only way that you can mitigate a lot of the debt that you're bringing on is to maintain structural balance, maintain reserve positions and probably beef up your reserve position. One way that the city could do that is by, you know, purposely taxing, taxing some of that unused levy capacity. I mean, I remember a long time ago, several administrations ago, when it was five million dollars. It's now thirty million dollars of unused levy capacity. You've got tremendous capacity and flexibility and opportunity there, but the city has to decide for itself what it is and isn't willing to do. It's not clear that if you issue a lot, uh, you know, there's no real number. I don't have a number of how much more debt you can issue. The rating agencies don't have a number as to how much more debt. The rating agencies would say if you issue debt and it adds pressure, you've already got pressure on the budget from unfunded, funding the unfunded pension liability. It's only forty-two percent funded. You're probably not going to earn the seven and a half percent assumed rate of return that you're assuming on that. What is the city doing to address that? So until it does, there's added pressure there on the city's budgets as you go forward. Everything is about going forward and sustaining what you've got and building on it. And the same thing with OPEB. You've, you've got some, you've got an OPEB trust. It doesn't have a lot of money in it. When you look at how you're going to afford OPEB going, going forward, there's a lot of ascending costs there. And so that, plus the pension, plus bringing on debt and getting what you want with regard to the kinds of projects that you want to get accomplished, especially if you want to get them accomplished with this low rate environment. You know, there's a lot of opportunity to save a lot of money, get what you want to get done, but it does there, there is, as there's more pressure associated with what I'm talking about right now and on the regular, on the operating budget to begin with as you go forward. And with the, with what's happening with reduced revenues to some extent under Covid and the constraints and the reductions there. Well, then, in my mind, and it's not up to me, obviously, and I, and this isn't the first time I brought it up. I keep bringing it up. And nobody wants to be taxed more. I don't like it. But you've got a lot of unused levy capacity under the lower levy limit that's sitting there without necessarily, you, you're getting credit for it, but you're not getting as much credit for it as if you had more reserves. The reason why Moody's, which you're not using, rates the city the double A three is because of the reserve levels for the most part. And it's without a doubt, the way Standard and Poor's thinks, and again, they're the highest rating, but again, that's not the end-all. Because, is that as you go forward, as you make choices relative to everything, the operating budget, the pension, the OPEB and debt issuance and how, you know, the, the issues comes up and the scrutiny will be on your reserve position as you go forward. Are you committed to maintaining it? Is it gonna, does it, does it get, is there something that would would negatively impact it? If it's negatively impact, impacted, how quickly can the city restore it? And can the city grow it in light of what is going on to a level that's more commensurate with your peers? So those are some of the things I think that the city needs to give serious thought about. I think that there's a great opportunity right now to accelerate debt and to take advantage of these interest rates. Right now, the city could issue, we, we're looking at what the city is looking at right now, twenty-five-year debt at, at, you know, one, one eighty-five, 1.85%. I mean, that's a crazy rate. If there's any inflation going forward in the next twenty-five years, which we can assume there will be, that's like borrowing money for, at zero percent. Or, and that's how it would play out. There's, you know, it's too bad that the city can't accelerate all the debt it wants to sell and, and lock it in at these rates. But unfortunately, Massachusetts law is extremely conservative with regard to how you can even structure debt. So you have to fit it in. You've got debt that's coming off your books at the same time as you're adding wanting to add debt to your books. So that's more of the balancing act that we look at when we look at is there an opportunity to try to take advantage of what's going on in the markets right now? So that's sort of an overview. I mean, I think that the city, like I said, when I started out, the city's got tremendous strength. It's got tremendous opportunity and it really needs to, um, and it can, it, in a way, the, the world is your oyster, but you need to, you know, kind of fit all the pieces together and, uh, but you can't leave out the, the issue of reserves if the, if the priority is to maintain the double A plus. I just want to make that clear, but I think that you can, if you beef, beef up reserves as you go forward. I think that you can, you, that, that there's not really a reason you can't with the strength of the base that you've got. So I know that that's a little bit wishy, sounds maybe a little bit wishy-washy. That's what general, that's what, how the rating works is that there's not just sort of an exact answer for every category of how something's looked at. It's a whole lot of everything put together and then considered. So that's all I have to say, really.
Thank you so much, Cindy. I'm always learning something new from you, um, in my experience here. Every time you come and present, there's always new information. So I appreciate your time. I'm going to, um, just open it up to my colleagues for questions that they might have for you. Does anybody have any questions that they'd like to ask Cindy? Okay, we'll go to Council Kroll first and then Council Mahoney. Council Kroll?
Just unmute here. Thank you, uh, Madam President. How are you? Nice to see you.
You too.
So I get a little bit more light during your presentation. I apologize, but, uh, the computer decided to reboot, so, um, I might have caught forty percent of it when, um, when I picked it back up. Through the feed, I heard you beginning to speak about pensions and taxing the levy, which I know, you know, I've been on this council now, if you can believe it, close to a decade. We've certainly went around and round on the whole idea of taxing the levy. I, I mean, I understand it from your perspective and I'm pretty confident you understand it from, uh, my perspective. You know, given, and you'll probably hear more of it here this evening, because I know that, uh, earlier on, there was some discussion around, you know, city budgets as it relates to state reimbursements, federal reimbursements and just overall revenues back to Covid. And it is a really just neat, probably unparalleled environment, much to your point where you have historic dislocations within the interest rate environment. But your clients, I, I can't recall exactly, but you have several municipal clients, right? Correct?
A lot.
A lot of municipal clients in Massachusetts?
Yeah, we've, I mean, are you asking me how many?
Yeah, no, if I recall, right? You have several.
Oh, yes. Yeah, we work with, we work with a lot of municipalities in the state, probably about a hundred and seventy-five.
Oh, no kidding. Wow. Okay. That's, uh, that's important. So I mean, I know that every city and town is different, right? And that's probably the exciting part of your job. But given all the unknowns, you know, as to what may or may not be coming down the pike in terms of, uh, revenues and reimbursements, like, how do you advise in that particular environment?
How do we what?
How do you advise two cities and towns, um, you know, from, I guess prioritization, from a prioritization standpoint?
Priority projects?
Yeah, just in general, like
Oh, well, I
managing the, the day-to-day budget, managing, you know, capital improvements, managing, you know, to a certain point, the reserve funds and other entities that are very important to the credit agencies. I mean, it just seems like a really tricky environment.
Well, we, well, um, we do a lot of due diligence. I mean, we ask a lot of questions and we find out what the municipality thinks it wants. And then we try, we create debt models so that we put together different options as to how debt could be structured and issued so as to be manageable. You know, it's the same kind of, um, you know, we don't, I started, what my opening comment was that we generally give advice that will help to maintain at a minimum or strengthen the issuer's credit in the process. And we find out what the issuer wants. And if the issuer is lacking in any regards, we usually will point out be, what, what they might be able to do to strengthen their credit. It's not just about reserves. It might have to do with development of fiscal policies. It might do with, um, you know, with, with different kinds of, uh, evaluation of how to roll out debt if they've got debt needs. I mean, you know, what we, it, uh, every municipality, most municipalities have a pretty good idea of what they want. And so we listen to what they think they, what they want and we help to, you know, uh, focus on what's important to look at from the perspective of accessing the market. I mean, my role isn't to give advice on the operating budget. My role is to give advice on how to issue and structure debt and to protect credit in the process, credit ratings in the process. That's more my role. I don't, I mean, I, I, it's a, it's a difficult, it's a very difficult job to balance the budget and decide what department should get what amount of money. That's not, that's not what I do. Issue debt. So if a community is, if an issuer is thinking they've got fifty, twenty million dollars worth of debt, should I issue it now? Should I issue it later? Should I issue it to pay back over twenty years, ten years, twenty-five years? I take a look at the house. Should it be structured like a mortgage? Should it be structured equal principal? It might be comprised of a hundred different projects. I'll take a look at that with them and let them see it. And if they say, well, we have to, we have to pay off a lot of our existing debt, we need to push this out, then we'll create a debt model that shows them what that looks like and make different assumptions about what rates might be in the future. We'll create instead of a bond plan, a short-term note plan. You can issue notes now in Massachusetts for up to ten years. And, you know, start paying it down by year three as if you had sold bonds, but otherwise, but you might get in a high-rate environment, we would show what that might cost you to wait versus if you can figure out how to start sooner. One of the things I was saying about Quincy is that you've got a lot of flexibility with the unused levy capacity to try to take, well, I know, I, I, I get that reaction a lot. Most municipalities don't have the amount of unused levy capacity you've got under the lower levy limit. You know, my own community has five million that they leave on the table and we're only fourteen thousand people. We have this conversation all the time. It's such, it's, it's an interesting conversation to have with a lot of people that know the ins and outs of it. I, if, you know, if, if the city has no interest other than to keep amassing more unused levy capacity, that, there's nothing wrong with that. But if you think you're going to do, if you think you can do that and not build your reserves and issue debt at the same time and maintain the double A plus rating, you might have to think again. And so I, you know, it, like I said, it's a balancing act as to what makes the most sense for Quincy. If Quincy is, you know, doesn't want to increase its reserves and wants to increase debt or if there's, you know, I, I'm under the impression Quincy has, uh, uh, you know, it's got debt on its books that hasn't sold yet. So at a minimum, it needs to figure out what to do with that debt, unless it's going to abandon projects. So as we look at that, one of the issues that comes up is building reserves. And I grant you that in Covid, it's a hard sell. I mean, we're seeing a lot of municipalities authorizing hundred-million-dollar school projects right now in Covid, in the middle of Covid, including mine, you know, about to, trying to get that accomplished. It's, it's, you know, my advice starts with what the community is trying to achieve and what's, what the community's vision is for itself. And then my limited role is to help them try to achieve that in a way that is really palatable. Just, I'm not just talking about increasing taxes.
But you're also taking into consideration, and I, and I understand like your debt modeling and basically your, you know, your bond structure that you're, you're working with the, um, finance office to achieve, but you're taking into consideration, obviously, you know, it's no surprise that there will be some disconnect in the level of state funding that we're receiving and I'm sure locally, you know, there'll be some, um, some impact to local receipts, but you don't necessarily get into that discussion. That's more of an internal discussion. You're viewing it more from here's what we believe the credit agency looking at. Here's how we believe that you can accomplish A, B, C.
Uh, no, not at all, not at all. I don't think that characterizes what we do at all. I, I, in fact, we, we just, the city just came to market with the refunding and we had to understand what the city, how the city was being impacted by Covid. How much of its revenues were, were being hit? If the state had gone through with cutting state aid the way it was originally anticipated, we'd see a deferral of debt and it would make sense to do that. When the market froze, we saw a lot of, you know, there was no access to market at all. So people weren't issuing debt there. They've changed course and started issuing short-term notes. We don't have an agenda and our agenda is not, I started the conversation by saying our agenda is not what the rating agencies think. To the extent the city cares about maintaining its rating, I can tell you the kinds of things that will help you do that and the kinds of things that will make it so that it would be hard to do it. And I try to be, you know, shoot from the hip and tell you as it is, like it is, but I'm not going to. I, no, I'm not telling you you should raise taxes. I'm telling you that you have that one pocket of strength that there's a lot to think about regarding that. I'm not telling you the, I don't have the answer.
No, I understand. I understand. And you've always, I mean, that's one thing I've admired about your approach is you've just shot it straight down the middle and, uh,
But I would never suggest you do this project or do that project. I don't, you know, from my perspective, I don't
Right.
It's, it's all debt. I'm not looking at the purpose. I'm not looking at, um, you know, from, from that perspective. You know, is it, is it wanted? You know, that kind of thing, that would be the question. Is it affordable?
That's right.
And how are you going to afford it? But if you're going to afford it by, by depleting or cutting into reserves, there might be consequences to that.
So back about maybe a year and a half ago, this body along with the mayor unanimously supported, uh, basically creating like a sinking fund or, you know, an excess, uh, revenue fund inside of the DIF. And it's interesting how you point out that the credit agencies don't look at it as, for lack of better word, a separate tranche of money. They look at it as all-inclusive debt, you know, tied to the city. Does the creation of, you know, call it a reserve account inside of the DIF, does that, does that move the needle with the rating? does that move the needle with the rating agencies? Because I know that we typically do have a surplus.
Uh, not on that debt right now. I mean, that, you haven't even bonded most of that debt. It's all outstanding in notes.
But I'm just saying the exercise of creating an opportunity.
Oh, that's important and that's important, not just for the rating agencies. That's important for the city.
I, I, well, that's why it was done for the important city. One. Number two, you know, from the rating agency's lens, I'm just trying to gauge whether or not they.
The rating agency doesn't give it, and who care, I mean, really, it doesn't matter what they think, but it's important to know how they think. But I, you know, they don't look at it as self-supporting, even if you've got revenues set aside to pay it back.
Right.
General fund, it's in the general fund. It's a, well, I should ask the city a question. Is it restricted only to that debt?
No.
Or can it be used for, you know, if, if there's excess for what's maturing in a year, can the excess that's coming in be used for some other general fund operating purpose?
What's that, the revenue?
Correct.
So after you pay your bills, if there's an excess in revenue, can that be used to the general fund?
From the DIF district, it's producing revenue from the new growth. If the revenue that it's producing is in excess of the amount of debt maturing on DIF notes and DIF bonds, can that excess revenue be applied? Does it revert to the general fund or is it being maintained in the fund for later years when bond principal is going to be payable?
That was kind of.
Eric, Eric can answer that question. I, I, I'm not, you know, I don't know all the revenue numbers for the.
My, my recollection is that re-circulated itself to the general fund.
Well, that's why the rating agency views it the way that they do. So.
Is that right, Eric?
Yeah. So, good evening, Council. How the DIF fund functions, our O200 fund, is that it's considered a subset of the general fund. So any excess revenue above the necessary debt service gets transferred back to the general fund, the O100.
That was part of the process with the conversation was capturing a portion of that to go into a quote rainy day funds, you know, tied specifically to the DIF.
Correct.
And it wasn't about the rating agencies. It was about establishing an emergency savings account in the event, you know, that the revenue wasn't self-supported. I think that was going into it.
Correct. That's my recollection of the counseling.
So I think chapter 42, which is DIF, the DIF legislation statewide, allows the money to be captured and the excess to go back to the general fund. That's why the rating agency thinks about it the way they do.
Yeah, makes sense.
If, if the excess in one year was set aside for future years, debt service that will be coming on DIF debt as it's bonded, that, you know, that might be different, you know, but right now, that's not. It's, it's paying for the, the DIF debt that's maturing, but there's a DIF debt that hasn't been taken out yet.
So as you're having these conversations, you know, too, and it was a conversation that was handed to us essentially through the rating agencies was the adoption of various financial policies. So we were contributing to, you know, multiple buckets every year. I think one was stabilization, one was unfunded pension liability. And the third one escapes me offhand. It might be, it might be OPEB.
Yep.
But in, in or through that exercise, we also established, you know, full acronym of a word, debt cap. So basically a percentage of debt that we could carry on our books at any given time. Any sort of thoughts in terms of like where we're at with respect to that versus what we have down the pike?
I read your debt policies. They were issued, they were written and maybe accepted back in 2016. That's the group that I, that's, they're four years old. The city's valuation has increased by $5 billion in that same timeframe. I mean, I think that from the perspective of some of the debt metrics, you know, I said that they view your debt and that includes pension, unfunded pension, unfunded OPEB, which is $1 billion combined as heavy. And just the bonds outstanding, including the DIF, as a lot. They've got you in the weakest category there. But at the same time, they point out that your total debt, uh, bonded debt, net debt, net of what's self-supporting, is, is really low compared to the value of the tax base of the city. So they're not, you know, that, at the same time that they're saying that the debt is high, and again, the debt.
Oh, I understand. I, I, I read those reports myself, too.
Okay, but at the same time that they're saying that it's high, one, it only counts as 10% of how they look at the rating. And, you know, so, and, and, and for two, they are also saying, not directly, but they're basically saying to the extent that any of the debt metrics or any of the lost revenues associated with COVID or any draws on the reserves, anything that adds pressure on the city's budget to balance it would have consequences. So all I'm saying is that it behooves the city to be very proactive to avoid that if that's what the city wants. I'm, I'm, I'm the messenger. I'm, I'm like, don't.
I understand. Sure. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Right, right, right. This final question, this is kind of where I key back in after the computer mishap there. You're talking about unfunded pensions. And I think I, I missed the first part, but the second part was like viewing it as like PEGO. So I don't know what the first part was there. But I also know that this is not just, you know, a local to the city of Quincy problem or regional. It's literally a national problem. So, but I also know that there's some other municipalities, you know, local to us that, that seem to be kind of moving through it. Is it just come, come down to like prioritization, how much money you're essentially putting into that fund every year? Like, do you have any other, I don't know, sort of strategies that may have evolved itself or advice that you're giving other municipalities on how to tackle that? I mean, I just never viewed it as a red herring, but that's probably just, just me.
Well, I think so, I think that a lot of municipalities are, are being more proactive with regard to managing it. They might have, you know, right now, we're looking at assumptions about returns. Agency, I use them because I think that, you know, you can either look at how the GFOA thinks or you can look at how the rating agency thinks. I mean, you can look at different kinds of, of viewpoints on what should the assumed rate of return be. But right now, I think the city is assuming maybe seven and a half percent. Rating agency thinks it should be six and a half percent. Moody's Investor Service, which you're not using them right now, but they actually recalculate the unfunded pension liability based on their assumed rate of return of 4.1%. And they apply it across the whole country so they can compare apples to apples when they look at this. Some municipalities are cutting in slowly but surely trying to cut their assumed rate of return. And some municipalities are looking at whether, how, how quickly they might amortize it. Uh, I was saying, some are not handing out COLAs because of it. I'm not saying what's right and what's wrong, but some are handling it that way because they've got unfunded OPEB to deal with, too. I mean, the city has something like $700 million of unfunded OPEB. And that's the one I was saying was pay-as-you-go. You're on a schedule with regard to the unfunded pension liability. But if you look at the way that schedule plays out, it ascends a lot, as does the OPEB. So, you know, from what's happened was, and I might've said this last year, but the perspective has changed from looking at historic trends to looking prospectively at what you're dealing with going forward. If it's COVID and right now, COVID, people are looking at COVID, COVID's impact for the next three or four years, not just fiscal '21 or fiscal '22. People are looking at '23 and '24 that everybody is, investors, rating agencies, the city, you know, that you, you need to evaluate how constrained you might be and react to it and develop a plan to deal with that, but also to do the other kinds of things that you want to do at the same time, which might include, well, does include the debt on your books to be issued, but also debt that you may want to authorize or whether or not you want to start funding OPEB sooner than later or whether or not you want to, you know, make different assumptions about the pension, which would hurt the amortization schedule. If you lower the assumed rate of return, you're paying more. But it would get you where you want to go sooner. Built in a day. I'm not suggesting you can do all this at once, but if a little bit is, is sort of, you know, kind of taken to address, it, it has a really beneficial, if you, if, so back to the, and I'm not suggesting you do this, but here's an example on the unused levy capacity. If a small amount was charged and then it was the same amount the following year, but a teeny bit more, a couple hundred thousand dollars, something that would have almost no impact once it's spread out amongst all the taxpayers. Well, you could beef up the reserve position to something that would mitigate the debt that you might want to accelerate to take advantage of rates to save the city millions of dollars. And that's, that's something that it's hard not to take a look at. But, you know, because it, because it's right there. Uh, and in front, the city right now is rated with really strong management. There's probably a couple of things that could be done with the fiscal policies to make it so that it was very strong, which would beef it up even further and strengthen the city. And it's not just about the rating, and I've said this before, it's about flexibility. It's about being able to take advantage of opportunities. I mean, right now, to the extent that the city built up its flexibility, it could, you know, it could, it could, it can jump on not just Quincy, other cities, too, which some of them are doing it and some are saying, I wish I could do it. But I, but we can't do it because we don't have that much flexibility to take advantage of these interest rates. But, you know, so I'm not saying what you should do. I'm saying.
What you could do. I understand.
No, I'm saying what you, what it makes sense to consider.
Right. All right. I don't want to monopolize the microphone. Uh, I may come back, but I do appreciate this conversation just because, you know, like everyone else on the call here tonight, we just want the best for the city. And this is stuff that I just genuinely like to, to think through. So good to see you and thank you for, thank you for your talk. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilwoman Crowell. Councilwoman Mahoney?
Thank you, Madam President. Cinder, thank you very much for walking us through, through this. And this is my first time being able to be on the council with you, walking us through this. So if you, if you could, and I'm going to ask you to just to repeat a few things because it was valuable to me. So if you could go through, you were talking about the, you know, the, the rating is 10% of our rating. And that's, that is the, the pensions, the OPEB and our, our debt as it is today, including the DIF. You, you gave some approximate numbers. Could you just share those with me again?
Yeah, you've got right now about 250 million, it's a little more, $250 million worth of permanent debt and $250 million worth of short-term debt.
And then you also mentioned that the city just rolled over. How much did they just roll over to take advantage of the rates?
Oh, that was a refunding. I was saying that you saved about $4.7 million. It was a great-looking refunding. It was school construction debt that had been issued in the past.
Okay. Um, and then you were suggesting that, and this is just a suggestion. This is one of the things that you were making a suggestion, if we could take advantage of that. Um, it, it would be like, right now for people at home to equate this would be your mortgages. If you have a, if you have a higher mortgage rate, now's the time to refinance because the rates are low.
That's what I was, that's what you just did with regard to the refunding. So yes.
Exactly. So how, how much more debt, so for the outstanding $250 million that we have in the unsecured would be that something that you're talking about if the city was flexible to be able to bring that down to the one point to, to refinance potentially? Is that something that you would advise us to do or not advise us to do?
No, the only refunding opportunity you had was what you just did.
What we just did. Okay. So I just want to be sure because, and the reason why I asked that was because if somebody was, if I was watching this at home, I'd be like, why aren't we doing that? Why are we not taking advantage of that? We already have taken advantage of what we could take advantage of, correct?
Yes.
Okay. And unfortunately, the way the state works doesn't allow you to take advantage of all the debt you have because you have to roll it over to the long-term. I mean, you have to roll over the short-term debt, too. Is that how that works?
Uh, no. So the federal government changed the rules a couple of years ago. They changed tax law so that you can only fund debt. That's like the way you do a mortgage, where you build that when you can call it in and prepay it and just issue the new debt at the same time.
Okay.
But not all of the city's debt is callable right now. So as it becomes callable in the future, there will, there might be more opportunities. There probably will be.
Yeah. So we have to pay attention to that. So really, I mean, that's something that we need to, as a city, be able to really have a pulse on where that is. Then the, you also broke it down, too. So 10% is our debt and that's how we get our ratings. Um, and then you also said 30% is our economics, correct?
Right.
And when you say economics, just, just for anybody that's at home, what do you mean by the economics? Are you talking about the economics of our tax base or the economics of our business base? Or is it a combination of how we collect taxes or are we talking about, you know, what are we talking about when we talk about economics?
Well, we're talking about a lot of things. We're talking about the value of property. We're talking about value of property per capita. We're talking about income per capita. We're talking about what's going on locally in terms of economic development and what's happening with the DIF district, what it's, what it's producing in terms of growth. We're talking about what's happening in the county and what's happening in the state and the nation. It's, you know, the, the.
It's a larger, yeah. So it's a larger formula. And it's also probably taking into consideration unemployment and is it taken into?
Unemployment, your largest taxpayers, your employment base, your unemployment rate. Your unemployment rate right now is something that all by itself could negatively impact the credit rating.
So these are all things that we have to, as a, as a council, have to pay attention to, too. But sometimes when we look at that, we might bulk them together and not necessarily look at them individually like that because it's all in how we look at these things. But that's how you're looking at it, when you're looking at, to give us advice, correct?
Well.
Part of it.
Well, I, so I, I, I guess over all the years I've been doing this, I start looking at it the way analysts look at it. Whether rating agency analysts or investment company analysts, I look at the people who are willing to invest in the city and loan the city the money needs for what it does. I look at how they think about, you know, whether or not if you, if, if, if there is less wealth in a community, the expectation is that, you know, you might want to see higher levels of reserves.
Right. Okay. And then so that was the.
Income is low, then you might want to see, you know, extra, some kind of an extra cushion if, if you, if, if, as, as one item, not necessarily. I mean, everything, you know, but, but those things are what impacts borrowing rates.
Exactly. And then, so that was the 10%.
There's only some things you can control and there's other things that you can't control, obviously. So, but it factors into the whole credit profile.
Right. And the other 10%, was that levy capacity? Is that what you mentioned? That they look at the levy capacity to get us to like the 50% when you're looking at the, you basically had.
I was saying the economy was 30%.
Yep.
Management of the city is 20%. How well the city is managed. Now, you've got fiscal policies, how well you perform. The actual budget flexibility is a reflection of how much you've got in reserves. And on your audited statements, not under Massachusetts system of accounting, but looking at audits, audited results, they look at liquidity. That's a 10%. They look at your, whether or not you're structurally balanced and whether or not you produce a surplus each year. That's 10%.
10%?
What?
That's 10%? Is it, is it 10%?
10%. And then they look at the institutional framework. That's 10% too. That's state law. That's how you, what, what, you know, what you can do and what you can't do, how constrained that is. And I think that's all of the categories.
And I appreciate, yeah, and I appreciate you walking us through that, too, because, because obviously with COVID, you know, we're, you know, prior to COVID, I think we would be, you know, we were, I think everybody, I think this just has impacted everybody in such a way. It's unprecedented and it's, it's, it's uncertain. Businesses are tightening their belts. They're conservative of how they're spending their money because they are trying to not just navigate this, you know, the, the cycle until we, until we're like all back to normal. But they're also seeing it as a long-term cycle. It could potentially be the rest of the year. It could be the next two years. It could impact businesses. And, and communities are the same way. I realize that, you know, in, in private businesses, we, you have a, you have a, a benchmark that you're trying to make to make sure that you can stay in business. And in municipality, we rely on our, you know, our tax base, our commercial base and, and other pieces. So some of the debt that we do take out, and this is where our operating budget does come into play is, you know, we have hotel motel tax. We have other reserves that we use that we also fund our debt off of. And our hotel motel is taking a desperate hit with COVID. And, you know, we do have a lot of debt that we have funded through that. So I, do you look at that, too, and give advice on the city to that if that's something, that's a stream? Because that's something I'm concerned about in the sense that, you know, COVID is definitely having an impact on that particular.
I, I generally, you know, I have a lot of conversations with communities about multi-year forecasting, both, not just an operating budget, which is what you go on, but on the assumption about revenues. And that includes right now about how hard you're being hit by COVID.
Right.
Uncertainties. I mean, I, I am, the, the advice I give is conservative in nature. And it's important to be.
I definitely am getting that. So, and I like that because I'm pretty conservative when it comes to finances, too. But I, I appreciate that because I understand where you're coming from with that.
Well, the biggest thing right now is to, to have a budget. Well, the biggest thing right now is to, to have a budget that, an operating budget, and that includes debt service on whatever it is you're going to fund, that is sustainable and that's structurally balanced and that, and that has been, you know, really vetted in terms of, you know, your capacity to react to some of the uncertainties that it sounds like there's concerns about, which are definitely built in concerns right now to every assumption about the revenue base. You know, we don't know when there's going to be a vaccine, even though, you know, so we don't know, we don't know a lot about anything right now.
Exactly. No, I know, and we don't.
The state's going to do about state aid next year, and that's one of the biggest factors.
Yeah, and, and I think, um, you know, even when we were doing our budget this year, we didn't know what the state was going to do and, um, and how we were going to be funded. And that's only going to get us through this year. So now next year is our bigger concern because, um, I think we're all doing the same thing, which is kind of holding our breath because we don't know what's ahead of us. And it is, it, it's something that, and, and this is one of the reasons why I was, I was asking for you before us, because there's a lot of priorities that the administration has. And, um, and the question is, we as counselors, when we're making these decisions is, how do we prioritize the priority list? Because we can't have, potentially, you know, this is like, you know, this is, this is where we have to kind of look at it and say, you know, how, how do we keep, how do we maintain that flexibility in our finances? And how do we make sure that we're, you know, we're, we're taking on the correct debt as opposed to taking on all of the debt? Especially if we're, you know, looking at the multiple different ways we could fund something, if it's hotel motel is one way we funded something, and that may not be something that will bounce back that fast because we don't know what the impact to that. It was a great, it's a great revenue source, or it had been, but at this current time, it may not be the revenue source that we should be looking at potentially for a future funding because it could dwindle pretty fast if we do that, um, that sense of, that, that, that particular piece. Um, we also have, you know, you know, I, I look at things and I, and I think of, um, the DIF in the downtown, I, I appreciate the fact that you kind of explained that because oftentimes when we talk about the DIF, we kind of say it pays for itself because it's the downtown. But in the reality of it, when the bond rating, the one we're looking, when they're looking at it and rating us, it's, it's looked at as, as our debt, as opposed to it pays for itself.
Well, it just factors into how they're evaluating your debt profile, but it doesn't matter about that so much as to, and they do that, but it is paying its own way.
No, I know it's paying its own way, but, but also, um, I understand the formula and what it means to pay its own way, and I understand why municipalities use it. But then, you know, you add the, um, you add COVID to the mix and you don't know what, what the impact it can have on potentially that as well. So, and, and that, again, prior to COVID, I probably would have not said the same sentence I'm saying, which is we have to pay attention to the DIF. I would say, oh, it's going to pay for itself. And potentially it still will, but it's something that we have to pay close attention to because we have to look at everything as one.
Well, the DIF debt is not something that's being accelerated right now. It's, it's definitely going along with, to mirror the growth revenues that are created by the development in the DIF over a long period of time. So, um, you know.
Yeah, so long as, so long as the.
What you're saying is why the rating agency views it as more uncertain than say water or sewer debt that's paid for with water and sewer rates that can be raised.
Right, yeah. Um, and also impacts that can happen because, you know, the, when we, I, I don't want to actually talk, I, I'd rather not look at what could potentially, the negative sides of what could happen to something, so I'm trying to stay positive. But, but it's a natural thing to go to. So, and then the excess levy, I, I'm surprised because I always thought when you had excess levy that you would be, I understand what you're saying, that you're, that because we don't tax, we don't, the, the, we're in a unique situation in Quincy because we can always say we have excess levy, and that is always something that makes one feel well, but, but what you're suggesting and, and I, I, you know, it's very hard to say we, people always say, well, will we ever get, um, you know, proposition two and a half in Quincy? I'm like, no, because we have excess levy, like, because you, you can raise your taxes. But, but that's not necessarily the first thing you'd want to do, especially in a COVID situation, because there's a lot of people who are struggling right now. Um, and even if, even if, you know, what we thought was the average household income last year was something, there's a lot of people in that pool of people who have, who've had either their debt, their, their, lost their jobs or they, they are, um, underemployed, um, or they don't know what the certainty of things are. And that's, you know, that's an individual household that has to figure those things out. However, we are, are running a municipality and we have to remember that we have to try to balance everything for the whole, um, when we're doing this.
Well, just to, just to be clear, what you, the city gets a tremendous amount of credit for having amassed that amount of unused excess levy capacity.
Oh wait, and I was, it was when you said 10%, you mentioned it was like, they, they would, there's other ways to formulate that for the flexibility, is what you were suggesting.
Oh, no, it's not, yes, right. They look at the amount of reserves on your balance sheet in your audits, and that's not, the excess levy capacity doesn't show up there.
Right.
That reserve, so that's 25 million right now as of June 3019. To the extent that main, is maintained and grown any amount of growth, so that you're making forward progress. I'm not suggesting that you tax the unused levy capacity.
Oh, no, no, I'm not suggesting you said, I'm just saying that we have it.
But you have it and you are getting credit for it. Right now, you're, you're, you're definitely getting credit for it because, um, you're, you're definitely getting, you're getting a lot of credit for it. But it's a, it's a question of, again, this balancing act and everything, so.
So, one of the other things that, and I'm just.
The city maintains reserves that you wouldn't keep the double A plus.
Right. Yeah, yeah, I understand what you're saying. You're saying that we have a $30 million reserve and if we have to tap into that and we don't, we can't maintain that, we want to maintain as much as we can and that to show that we have liquidity.
No, I'm talking about the 25 million on your balance sheet. You've got reserve.
Yep.
Yeah, that's the reserve to maintain and grow, not the 30 million. There's another reserve and it's, and it's there if you need it. And the city has shown that, and other times when it's needed, it's, it's dipped into it to.
Yeah. Oh, I know we had, I, I, I thank, I thank you for separating those two. The other thing is, is, um, you know, and this was a, it, it's, it's just a concern because I see some, I see some, or I've, I've asked some questions in the past in regards to some of the, some of the things that, that is in our operating budget and some of the funding that are the reimbursements we're supposed to get from different things that concern me. And ultimately, when you take out debt, you know, debt is debt and, um, your tax base that you bring in and you're, basically your operating budget, the people we have that work for the city is our operating budget. And, and, um, you know, when you have, when you have constraints, you have to pay your debt. Um, but if there's a constraint to the city, then it turns into something that's bigger, which impacts more people, which, you know, which I'm not saying we are right now, I'm just saying that that's something that we have to pay attention to. So when talking about that flexibility, I guess one of my concerns is trying to be able to figure out what the balance is that we can, or how does the city, um, when making its plans, how does it determine, can we take on all of, you know, if we have a wish list of projects that we're going to do, how do we, how do we, um, how do we balance that wish list to make sure that we're being able to be flexible? And, and do you help the city map out how they're going to be able to fund, um, or the debt that they want to take out? Or is it something that the city makes on it? Do they, do they consult with you when they do that?
We model the debt to show based on current interest rates and based on a certain bond structure, what that costs. And then the city decides if it can afford that. And if it needs to pay it back over a longer period of time or a shorter period of time or delay it, use notes instead of bonds to finance it, uh, you know.
And how do you, so, so now taking that, I understand that that.
I don't decide anything, I show.
No, 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 I know you don't. I, I know you don't, and I'm not suggesting you don't. You just advise, you just basically help them model it out and they make the decision as to what they want to do. But how do you advise your municipalities that you work for in regards to whether or not they should hold, like whether, whether they should hold or move forward when, with COVID, when it comes to COVID? The uncertainty of COVID is really what I'm trying to wrap my arms around in, in that particular case.
Well, I think a lot of, a lot, some municipalities, and I think Quincy's doing this, is taking a good hard look at, at worst case, best case and, and middle scenarios, what things might look like based on different kinds of assumptions about, about the economy, which is what you're talking about, about revenues, about the state might do. I mean, I think that the city's doing a lot of multi, of scrutiny about its own capacity to do things without, and grow that unused levy capacity at the same time, being very sensitive to the residents and the commercial industrial base, the commercial base. So I think that, I mean, I think the city's doing everything. You wouldn't be rated a double A plus if the city wasn't already doing a great job at what it's doing. You are.
No, no, I, yeah, I, I, I understand that. And I think we're, we were, when, when were we rated a double A plus though? Is that, is that recently?
September.
September. So, and how, do they, how often do they do it? Is it once a year or is it?
No, they do it when you issue debt.
Sorry, when you issue debt. So in this particular case.
The time you roll a note, if you renew a note instead of bonding it, if you roll it, they would most likely be looking at the credit rating.
Do they also give you credit for when, when they refinance to the 1.85?
Uh, well, refinance to 1.35.
1.35, yeah.
Your debt right now, you could sell it about 1, 1.85, if not better. But, um, they knew that you saved that kind of, that was, that was a lot of money. It, it's all part of the picture. It reduced your debt profile a little bit, but it was a really nice amount of savings. I mean, it was something like 30% savings.
No, and I applaud that. I'm just wondering if that also plays into the, it plays into the debt rating, when they rate us, is that something?
It does, but it's not going to, I mean, with a billion dollars of unfunded pension liability and unfunded OPEB, saving $5 million on an outstanding bond issue isn't going to move the needle, especially with what the city's already planning to bring. But that's okay. You've got all these other factors that are in place that you're maintaining that can sustain the double A plus if you're careful as you go forward, and the city is being careful.
So then, that brings me back to the OPEB and the pension then. So when it's a billion dollars and, and, um, worst case scenarios with the economy and COVID and different things, like, does that, it, it, what is it that, what would be the recommendation for, for the city in regards to those to be able to maybe get ahead of that rather than, I think you used the term, I didn't use the term, so I want to be careful when I use it, for OPEB kicking, kicking the problem down the road a little bit. I, I may be putting words in your mouth.
Uh, well, I didn't quite word it that way, but that's okay.
Yeah.
I, I said it was pay as you go and that's.
Pay as you go.
Municipalities are doing with OPEB.
Yep. I apologize, because I, I apologize because I certainly do not mean to put words in your mouth. Like, that's, that's, I, I apologize, but that's.
That's, that's okay, but I, but, um, that you're on a, on the pension plan, you're on a schedule to fund it. So there's really anything that you really need to do there, proactively, more than you're doing. On the OPEB, you're, you know, when the city can, it could possibly put, start putting more money into it. Otherwise, you're going to pay off the pension plan and pick up the OPEB cost. That's what most municipalities are planning on doing. A lot of investors, the rating agencies don't consider that much of a plan. I mean, I think what the, I think that what my advice is generally is to plan a lot. Plan as much as you can, figure out how to plan the future and then make it happen. So it's planning, and it takes a big effort to plan with the amount of detail I'm talking about, but, and planning, when people plan, and the city's doing a lot of this, I know they are, when, when the city, when, when you plan, then, then you plan some more and you keep planning, you get really good at planning and all of a sudden you've got a plan for everything and you're rolling it all out, and it all fits in line with a consensus about where you want to get to and how you want to do it. So it's, it's a big effort. The city's doing it, the city gets better at doing it every year than the year before. You know, the city, this is, I, the way I look at municipalities is that they, they evolve in terms of how they improve themselves on an annual basis. For the most part, they do. I mean, when Prop 2 and a half went through about 30 years ago or whenever, it, you know, you know, we were a mess.
Right.
We were, you know, people were a mess. There were no policies, there were no fiscal policies in municipalities. They, you know, we had more non-investment grade credits than any place in the country. We're now almost all triple As and double A pluses and double As in Massachusetts. There's tremendous strength in levels of sophistication at the local level of doing all this kind of work. So, you know, this, but, you know, so if I give advice, it's to plan ahead. Plan what you want, plan how you want to make it happen. Internal thing.
Well, I appreciate that because that is something that I have been asking, is to show the plan, to give us our path, to show us our way forward. And, um, and it is, um, you know, and not, not one project at a time, but opposed, but, but more in a sense of what's the priorities and how do we get there so that we can get there together? So I do appreciate you coming in and to, um, doing the presentation. As much as it was informal, it was very informative, so I, um, I, I do, do appreciate it. So thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Councilor. Uh, let me just look and see, does any other council have any other questions for Cinder? Okay, great, Cinder, thank you so much for your time as always, um, for coming in front of us, saying, you know, it'd be great to have been able to see you in person, but I appreciate you taking the time on Zoom.
We, believe it or not, we've been working remotely since March 13th. None of us have gone anywhere.
It's our new life. Well, thank you so much again, I appreciate it.
I'm just saying, thank you. I'm, so I'm going to just, um, take myself off.
You got it.
Have a nice night.
You too. Madam Clerk, next item on the agenda, please.
Number four, 2020 dash 137, a resolve for a 2020 mid-year fiscal update.
Thank you, and this was brought to us also by Council Mahoney and Council Premier Chi, but I, I think it's a great segue from the conversation we just had. So I'm going to just go ahead and turn it over to Eric. Eric?
You're the counselors. As provided for you last, uh, on Friday, um, there's unit dates for both revenue and for the general fund. Uh, it, it, it's a very interesting time to be analyzing, especially revenues. Um, for, I know a lot of people on this council have business backgrounds, so they're probably familiar with the term, it's the sixth standard deviation event. Uh, and that's where we're living in right now. Uh, we really do have, we, we do a lot of modeling, we do a lot of, uh, econometrics just trying to understand both exogenous and endogenous variables and how they can affect our revenues. Much with what the federal government, state governments, the private industry is dealing with, we don't have models that can accurately predict what we're seeing right now. Um, our modeling system does use a lot of logarithmic models. Um, so, you know, sensitivity to events is really how we measure our, measure our, uh, our, our revenue forecasts. And this, what we're seeing in front of us is much different than what we saw in, uh, 2008, 2007. Um, it's really unlike any event we have seen. I know of, of, just before, uh, the last time we had a global pandemic, it was 20 years before we even had macroeconomics as a discipline. Uh, so trying to apply some of these models to pandemic scenarios is a rather interesting challenge. And as many of you, many of the counselors know, I do love a good math challenge. Uh, but, so what we have to rely on is kind of a more, uh, what I call foundational modeling, and that's taking a look at what our revenues are in front of us, particularly what I'm concerned about is general fund revenue. So, uh, that's what my office has been diving into. And, uh, to tell you the truth, they're actually, um, stronger than I think we would expect in a sixth standard deviation event. Uh, particularly one account, I want to say that I was surprised with to see its strength, is both mail tax and motor vehicle excise tax are both performing robustly for this scenario we'd be, um, we were experiencing. And I use those two variables because they represent two disciplines of revenue classes. Motor vehicle excise tax are long-term durable goods, so that tells us consumer confidence in their long-term financial futures, where mail tax tells us disposable income, which is the ability to consume in the short term. Those are both very two, those are very two, very, those are both very important economic factors to understanding how people are going to exchange in this COVID world. And, and like all government, we are a transactional business. We gain our taxes through transactions, um, excluding the largest part of ours, which is the tax levy. But the, the tax levy moves at a much uh, slower developmental rate than, uh, general fund revenues. So as we look through, as we look through the revenues, uh, I was kind of optimistic to see those numbers strong. Uh, when we, last time we talked in May, uh, the revenue, the revenue figures were, you know, they, they weren't good, and no Mr. Val had good revenue figures six, wow, already six months ago. Uh, but we are, we do seem to be in a pattern that shows positive upgrowth. I, I would say one of, uh, another optimistic aspect of our revenue report is that um, ta, uh, collections on, uh, the tax levy, so on the actual property tax, are, are strong. We don't see a lot of, um, you know, delayed payments in there, and that's, that's really important to maintaining strong liquidity basis. And, uh, so I'm very optimistic on that fact, too. Uh, we, we could dive into, uh, any particular area that the council would like to discuss of. So I, I'm prepared to answer any questions. Uh, to you, Madam President, whoever you want to call it.
Thank you, Eric. Let me just go ahead and open it up to my colleagues. Does anybody have any questions for Eric? Counselor Phelan?
Hey, Eric. Um, through you, through you, Madam President, to, uh, to Eric, um, I was interested to hear what you said about the mail taxes. That, how does that shape up to last year?
It, it's, it's underperforming relative to last year, but it's not underperforming relative to the shock event we're seeing in the economy, which is a little perplexing. Uh, without historic data, I can't offer a causality um, explanation, but from a correlation, uh, from a correlation explanation, we have seen both in Massachusetts and, uh, nationally, that the amount of the, uh, savings as a percent of income have driven up quite dramatically. Um, that usually is related to increased disposable income. So I'm imagining people are, I mean, it sounds that we look at all the economic data, say, I guess people just have more income to spend on takeout than they normally would. And that sounds very counterintuitive at this time, but that's what the data's showing us.
So in other words, we're, we're making the beneficiary of that through the, through the mail tax?
Yes.
Interesting. Um, yeah.
I was not.
Well, I've always tried to keep my local restaurants open. I do a lot of takeout, and, uh, so, but, uh, it's, it's good to see that that is there. And you're, and you, and on, um, and it's interesting with the excise tax. Now, is that off from last year? Is that underperforming or is that right where it was last year?
It is, it is right online, in my opinion. It's pacing out great. Uh, we are getting, we're in a very interesting time right now, because a lot of our, the composition of excise tax, um, changes over throughout a year. It is very cyclical, based on when people buy new cars. So as the new models become the old models, we actually see inventory begins to rise on dealership. Uh, and they are, you know, always fearful of having to absorb inventory tax, so they lower their prices. We'll actually see a bump in motor vehicle last, the excise tax occur later on in fiscal years, that cyclical issue raises its head. Uh, so it is actually right on pace. I, and, um, again, that speaks more to the confidence in durable good purchases that we are seeing, and that, that's actually a trend nationally, too. So it's, it's not a big surprise Quincy is doing it, but it is very interesting to see it reflected so quickly in our balance sheet.
What are the funds you see in, that have gone down the most? I mean, I know we have various, uh, you know, obviously, like recently the mayor wasn't gonna charge people liquor fees, and we want to keep our restaurants open and going, so that's, was a, was a nice move on his part, but are there other areas where we're not collecting fees and revenue is not coming in?
Um, to building permits are still a little bit below where, uh, they would normally be at this time, and that's on top of the deficit they experienced at the end of last year. So there's a lag there. Um, you're absolutely right. Licensing fees are down, and, uh, probably not surprising, but somebody, uh, there is, uh, library fees are, um, still, are, are, are lacking, but the library's been closed, so it's, uh, not a surprise.
Uh, but you, you're saying right now that we have the revenues to pay for the city budget that we have. Looking at what we have, we have enough revenue to pay for all the bills we have coming up for this fiscal year.
Uh, my, my inclination is yes. I mean, we do, we, we did pass a very lean budget. So, well, we did, sorry, somebody jumped off my screen. Um, we did have, we did pass a very lean budget. Uh, so yes, I fully expect that, that we'll have, we'll have a positive end of position. It's still early in the year, uh, but given our current liquidity positions, if it's in terms of confidence in payment, yes, we have good liquidity positions. Um, there's nothing in this revenue report that makes me, um, nervous about, you know, complete, by having a, a, uh, finishing the year on, with a plus. Uh, so yeah, I would say, I would say I have strong confidence that we're going to finish the year with a surplus. Will, will it be one of the largest surplus in city history? No, I would not bet on that. Uh, but we are in a good financial position in terms of end of year balance sheet as of now.
All right, Madam Pres- President. Thank you. Thank you, Eric.
Thank you, Counselor.
Phelan, does anybody else have questions for, for Eric? Okay, Counselor Mahoney?
Thank you, Madam President. Um, thank you, Eric. Um, so I, we just went through, um, I think Counselor Phelan just asked what are the areas you're surprised in. Is there, um, any areas that you have concerns with, just out of curiosity?
Currently, not now. Uh, that has to do a little bit with some of the stronger numbers I'm seeing, some of the federal data and state data we're seeing. Um, there's always concern during COVID, and it's because inherently, as an economist, I'm always worried about not having longitudinal data to make decision-making processes. And we have a good amount of longitudinal data, actually, especially when it comes to what, what I, what are sometimes called long horizon events. So a long horizon event is, is bonding, for the most part. It'd be bonding, OPEB, a lot of the stuff that Cinder covered much better than, uh, I could articulate. So for long horizon events, I have a lot of confidence in those, and that same confidence, I believe, is reflected in consumers based upon the, a lot of state and federal data showing that durable goods sales and home price sales are up. Those are long horizon decision-makings. Uh, you don't make, uh, the decision to buy a house the same way you make a decision where to go to eat. Uh, those are two different, uh, analytical classes that we have to be aware of. So things up, I don't have a concern that would be a shock given COVID. Um, I'm still waiting to get more data in. We are a quarter way through the year, so I got to see some of the state revenue postings that, or the trustee, uh, payments that we get from the state, such as the mail tax is one of those, and, uh, they do give me some optimists, optimism, but given my analytical background, I'm inherently a pessimistic and conservative individual. But with that, I won't say, I, I'm not anxious. I would say, describe it that way.
Yeah. So one of the things that I, I do know, and just from, from conversations from other communities, is mail tax. A lot of people, because we are, we are, for, for those who are employed and have disposable income, um, because we're not commuting and we're not, um, spending that extra money that we normally would be, um, the luxury of having, you know, going out and having something, I think you're seeing, I think that's the, that's the, and, and honestly, we've been, you know, we're, we're, to think that we have been in a situation since March 13th is still to me, and I, I'm doing it every day, Eric, so I, every day I'm still kind of like when, and, you know, we just found out that, at least at my office, that the earliest will be maybe July before we go back, so, um, and it's just, and I, I, I'm, I, first of all, I'm very thankful that I have that extension of knowing that. Um, but it's a, it's a long-term, it's a, it's, it's not a short-term, there's not a short-term fix for this, so, um, although I will say that if I thought about going back in January, I was like, I don't really want to go back in January, so I'm thankful that it's July. So, um, so I think that that's, that's one positive. Um, obviously, you know, there's a curfew at 10, and there's different things that are happening, and we're seeing an uptick in cases, which I think might drive a different, I think we'll all still want to take, get takeout, so I think that's a good thing. Um, what about, so what about, like, what about areas in our budget that, and we're only really, so when you think about it, we're not halfway through. We're, what, four months?
We're, we're, we just, we're about, um,
Just passed.
Yeah, we're in period five for a budget.
Yeah. So, um, when looking at the budget, is there any, is there any certain, um, areas of the budget that we're not, we, we, that we're seeing that we're not gonna spend, or we're, you know, destined to maybe have? So that, is that how you're seeing that we're gonna be able to, like, when you have, like, certain areas, like I would say, like, we just found out that we're not gonna be having the, which I didn't anticipate, because we're not gonna be having the parade, right? So that the, um, maybe the celebration account is not being tapped into as much. Is that something that we're gonna be, you know, is that, how do, how do we look at things like that for the areas that we might have? Um, you know, we budgeted for things, but we might, we might not be tapping into. Is, and how does the COVID piece working into that? It's, I imagine that there's maybe some other areas that, like, maybe, and, um, the health department, maybe there's, there's more. I don't know, just, I'm just asking the, the difference there.
Absolutely. It's, it's actually something my office monitors a lot. We, uh, we, we're one of those departments that, we just run year-to-date budget reports all the time, and we did a lot of that anticipation of non-COVID-related activities when we built the FY21 budget. Uh, there are some events that have happened, for example, that refinancing action we did, uh, that is gonna result in a deappropriation, the, the option to deappropriate if this body so chooses. Uh, so we, we do look at these events and see how they, they play out. Relatively speaking, a lot of these cuts are made back in May. Uh, so, but that doesn't mean those are the final end of cut.
No, no, I know.
Yeah, and my office will be reviewing that continuously throughout the year to see either A, where deappropriation could occur, or B, where a position could be gained to increase free cash in FY22. Uh, it, it's, it's that long, it's that long forecast year that we're trying to look at. The council, you're exactly right. That starts with looking at our budget today. So there's not always a clear line between short and long term. Sometimes it's a medium term.
Well, the reason why I ask that is typically when, when, um, so, so in a normal situation, the council didn't really look at budgets. Typically, we look at them, we, we approve the budget, we look at the taxes, and we don't really talk about the budget again until we're a budget season. But because we're in a, um, and I, I would anticipate, Eric, that this is something you're looking at every day, because it would be, if that was my job, that would be, I mean, there's certain things we do, um, just in general, when we're, we're numbers people, you know, the first thing you look at is like, it, it's the first thing you'd look at probably when you go on the, I, I don't know if it's yours, but I just know there's certain things I do that, that way, that no matter who's asking me, I have that answer at the tip of my tongue, because, um, and I, you know, I, I say all the time that my job might be um, in marketing communications, but it's budget-driven, and I actually have to know where things are and where they, where they are concurrently through the whole process. So I'm imagining that you do that every day, but, so when we're looking at certain things, like, the, one of the things that concerned me last year, and it was, um, the college, the $2.5 million from the college. Where do we stand on that? I know that we didn't, we ended the year with that not coming in. And where do we stand on that for this year coming up? Because it's still part of our budget for this year.
So currently, we've collected the employer side expense through that line. Uh,
What does that mean?
Um, so, any, yeah, any contribution to healthcare, um, has a trustee component, and that's, that's how much the individuals pay.
Yep.
Not the entity that is Quincy College. Uh, as for, uh, we, we do transit, we do occasionally, uh, have to run what, what is sometimes called, uh, we, we like to run quarterly rev- uh, revenue reports. So why we do that is because it aligns up with some of these revenue co- uh, contributions. Uh, with, with the example of the college, I believe, and Mr. Walker can obviously jump in on this, if, uh, but, is that the administrative standpoint is that we are handling it like it's any other, like it would be any other city department as it's currently structured, which means the healthcare contribution is currently being internalized on our side of the board.
I, I understand that, but so, so I guess that doesn't answer the question that I'm asking. I understand that we're handling it on that side, but there was actually a, there was a, there was a dollar amount that we took a hit on last year, so what is the, what are we looking at this year? Is that, I know we're gonna be paying for it, but I just need to understand what that is. I know whether or not we, you know, we're four months in. Usually, we, you know, is, is it coming in a one lump sum, or is it something that they pay through the course of the year, or are we monitoring that because of the situation that we were in last year?
Oh, okay, sorry, Counselor, I think I misunderstood your question. So because it finished last year, whatever value it finished at last year, that's what it gets carried for in projection. So they made no-
Two point five, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, so they made no contribution last year, uh, outside of the employee, the employer, uh, employee expense. So right now, when the employee expense is being carried in the internalized side of the revenue report.
Yeah, so we are carrying, so last year we took a hit for 2.5, and this year we're carrying 2.5, or not just-
I believe it's about 2.1, uh, based on the employee contribution of that.
Okay. All right, and are there any other, um, are there any other areas in, in which, like that, that, I mean, I know in the hotel, we just mentioned the hotel motel. Um, males are up, hotel motel. Where do we stand on that?
Hotel motel is, is performing very weak.
I'm not surprised, and I, I, you know, I just, I, I thought maybe you might pull, I thought maybe, maybe, just maybe, that, maybe males, maybe we might find something else, but yeah, that doesn't surprise me.
I, I, I would have liked to, Counselor, I would love to be the bearer of good news for a change, uh, but no, it's, uh, it's performing weak. Um, our, our fund position relative to debt service is very strong in that fund. Uh, there was some recent reports, uh, put out at the national level showing, you know, we could start to see some recovery in the early, uh, it's, sorry, in the mid 2021s. Um, there's some good indicators of that, for example, uh, credit, uh, per, uh, personal credit decline this quarter for the first time since 2014. Um, you, that's usually a good indicator, indication for vacation travels. So it could be someone could see a quick rebound. Um, yeah, it's, it's a, so it's exactly where I think most people guess hotel motel is, there's another shot there.
Yeah, no, I know. Um, so are there any other areas, or we already mentioned the building, the building piece of it, um, and then, how much do we have in the reserves for the hotel motel?
I'd have to check that, Counselor. I believe it's, uh, between the, um, sorry, between the the history, the history side and the open space. I believe it's somewhere north of 2.9 million, but I would have to, I'd have to confirm that.
I thought it was higher, but that's okay. Um, so then the other, the last question that I have, and, and, and this is extremely helpful, I, 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 I'm glad to hear that, so you're basically saying that you've collected all of your revenues and taxes? Is that you said that the?
Very close. Uh, it's about what we'd expected in non-COVID.
Okay. And then, um, which is, that is very good, but at the same time, it's still, it's, this is not a, it's, it's interesting, because this is a, it's a different kind of hit that we're taking in regards, like, it's not, you know, when we had the last kind of hit to recession, that was definitely into the, um, subprime mortgages, it was hitting the mortgages, and that's why that's hitting us so hard. So sometimes that area, although where homes are retaining their value, and you're still seeing people purchase, as you said, but sometimes that's the lag. It's usually something that kind of comes up behind. You see the, when you start seeing the slowdown and, and, um, people taking money out, like, defaults on credit cards are more apt to be the higher ones, people that might be, um, that have, um, not secured, they don't have enough security in, in what they're doing, would be where you're seeing the headsets for most people.
There's actually, there's a, the Federal Reserve Economic Database FRED of St. Louis records this statistic. It's called ALLL, which is the Allowance for Leverage Loss Leases. They're about, not at 2008 levels, they're, they're fairly up there, but there's also some other exogenous events that cause that. Uh, we, banks aren't lending money as quickly.
No, I know, that's, that's why I'm bringing it up, because it's, it's a, it's a twofold. I mean, they're not only, not only are they not lending as much, they're also, their, their LTVs are lower, too, so you might be able to take out for, uh, a mortgage at 80%, 80%, 20% ratio, or going down to 70%, 30%. So it's, it's harder to get money from financial institutions unless you have, unless you have the, um, the, the money, the pocketed money to be able to do that, so. And that's, I mean, people are still doing it, though. That's, that's the thing. Um, okay, then I think there was one other question, but I'm, I'm drawing a blank on that as, as far as, so what about, I guess the last question that I have is, because I know we built into, is, it's always this question, which is overtime, like, we have overtime budgets throughout different departments. Um, are you seeing that as normal use, or is there, you know, is there, is it higher, low, I mean?
So relative to departments that are heavily strained by COVID, it is elevated. Um, we're fortunate that the CARES Act is going to cover the vast majority of that. So departments relative to COVID are, are very elevated, but that's gonna get wound down, and, uh, the CARES Act is going to, is going to pay for that, or FEMA reimbursement is going to pay for that. Departments that aren't impacted by COVID are actually performing well below where they were last year. There's a little bit of tail to say's.
So I guess that's the other question, and I think, I think, um, Mr. Walker said that we might have a little bit of an opportunity to talk a little bit about the COVID. So I guess that's the other thing, is that I was, I was questioning, is that I know that last year when we were talking about, um, when we were expending money, the question was if we needed to, we could take it from other departments, if we needed to, to be able to do that, but that we were keeping a track, and we had a special fund to be able to make sure that we knew exactly where we were spending that. So you submitted the COVID reimbursement back in September, correct?
Correct.
Does, and was that from 2020's budget, partially 2020's budget and partially 2021's budget, or?
So this fund was, um, just for your own editization.
I don't mean to, I don't mean to, I mean, I'm kind of diverting here, but I'm just, I think it's important, because it does, it's, it all comes back, back to like, hopefully, we're gonna get that reimbursement.
Yeah, so we've already received 6.7 million. Uh, how this, the reverse, this was done in forwards, not arrears, so we took out the $6.7 million upfront, and then, uh, my office-
We got it upfront? I didn't know we got it upfront.
Yeah, we did. It, it, this is where the CARES Act, Title V of the CARE, CARES Act, is so unique. It's very, very different than anything that we've encountered in the state and federal level. So we received 6.7 million upfront. Uh, we did apply October 30th for an additional 1.6 million, um, and this is all exclusive of FEMA. So we applied for, uh, we're at 8.3 million now. We've applied for additional 1 million. Uh, we've expensed 10.9 million, uh, and we still have several more rounds of FEMA reimbursements we're allowed to apply for. Currently, the city's on a trend to spend about $12 million on FEMA. Uh, but, sorry, $12 million on CARES Act with all except, um, a few larger ticker, ticket items, for example, the, um, the Chromebooks, the, the school, that we bought for the school department, those are not FEMA reimbursable. Uh, so we have some reimbursement that's gonna come in. We are, under the CARES Act, allowed to receive, uh, up to 16.3 million. So we, we are considerably lower than even what our cap is, as defined in the CARES Act, including section five.
Is there, Eric, could you share with us, just, I, I don't think I've ever seen the breakout for all of those things. I mean, it's, it's, I mean, I know that we've done a tremendous amount of work on our buildings and different things, but it would be very, I didn't know the Chromebooks, I know, I know there's certain things I do, that I do know where it's gone to, but it would be helpful, and, and I'm not sure if it would be helpful for all of us, but I'm assuming, I'm, I'm gonna speak for everybody and say, it would be great if we could kind of get that breakout for that, because I think it's, it's, um, it's important that we know that, because it helps us be able to, um, and understand where it's coming from. So that's completely separate, then, from our, that 16.3, so if we had overtime that's being strained in our current budget, would that be coming from the CARES Act, or which, or should it be, like, I, I guess my question is, is I, I'm, I'm trying to understand how you're tallying them from different things.
So we, we have one fund. It's, uh, Fund 3552. So we have one fund. It's Fund 3552, and it's where we divert all the COVID money, all the COVID expenses to. And what this does is you'll see some expenses similar to general fund, but we can charge them back to the CARES Act.
Okay.
And what we're doing, I'll give you a real, I'll give you a real example. Department 192 Public Buildings has like 90% of its year-to-date overtime expense. But that's because Public Buildings is doing a monumental task of redesigning, essentially redesigning every air system in every school and every public building. It's an impressive task to be undertaken. And so once they complete that task, that total number, we're going to move that over to the CARES Act, and that's going to be taken off the general fund and be that be in that separate fund that we do. And we budget all this stuff out. We look what we long-term forecast. My department, we have a gentleman in my department who oversees this. They work very closely. They do a very good job, not just projecting expenses that have occurred, but actually looking long term. What it's going to take to get, you know, make sure those air systems and schools are where they need to be at, whatever they have you, there's a very good synergy between the finances and the task being done. But it's, but we recorded.
So that's all being an expense through general, is it all being expense through general funds? Or is it? No.
No.
Just the overtime, just the overtime. Okay. Yeah. Because that's what I was going to say, because there's 16, the money that we're talking about, the COVID account, that's a separate thing, that we're using the CARES money to be able to pay for maybe the materials, but then we have the overtime that might be coming from the departments. And I think that is something like, you know, to tease out for us to be able to see and to understand where we're normally looking at your budget, like I said, when we review the budget at the end of the year. But because we're in this, we're all in this state of, it's just being able to, as Cinder basically said to us, planning, 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 and making sure that we have a good pulse on what's going on. It's it's just as important for all of us here on the council to be in line and sync with what's going on, so that when we're making decisions that we can understand that. So I think it would be very helpful if you could break that out for us. Maybe if you could share it with us, or maybe come back at another meeting and kind of break that out for us. I think it's 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 just extremely important. What about the free cash when it comes to certifying the free cash? Where are we standing for that?
It's currently at this, everything's been submitted to the state, and we're waiting, we're waiting verification approval.
Is there, do you have an idea of where we're, what we might anticipate for that? Or without without holding you to it, is there something, I mean, when we built out this budget last year, I believe that some of it was based on some assumptions, correct?
Yeah, I mean, every budget is based on assumptions.
So I guess I'm looking for what your assumptions are and where we think we are.
Yeah. I mean, we operate on what's called a zero-based budget. So we operate to be balanced. We don't operate for implicit, to have implicit surplus. Where we are, it is based on how the state is going to judge our combined balance sheet. It is difficult to, it's really difficult to know where we're going to finish with that. We have a general idea. We know it's going to be positive. But the state does have some flexibility in its ability to decide what council gets free cash and what doesn't. And given the kind of uncertainty that exists at the state, the state is, the state has a lot different issues than the state of Quincy does, because they're
Because they don't have, they don't collect taxes on their, on our houses.
Yes. They're based purely on consumption taxes, which are great to, as an economist, love consumption taxes. As a public sector finance guy, hate consumption taxes. Hard to project long term.
Well, unless it's a good economy.
Exactly. So I would, I would be, I think I would be more misleading than informative if I was to harbor a guess.
Okay. So but that's part of when we do our taxes, that will we have that information in when we're making our determination for our taxes? Is that the anticipation?
As of now, we are anticipated to have completed before the tax year.
And when do we anticipate that?
We're scheduled November 16th of the hearing.
Okay. So that's next week, right?
Yeah, it's a week from today. Yeah. All the days seem the same to me right now.
That's okay. It feels like, it's okay. I thought it was October earlier, so it's okay. So we're, so we're anticipating that we'll have the free cash by next week's presentation. And will be knowing what the tax base is going to be by next week? Is that that's anticipation?
Yes, exactly. And that's heavily tied to the combined balance sheet.
Yeah. Okay. And then I think that's it. I think that's all I have for you right now. I know I I didn't come prepared tonight, Eric. I apologize. I really didn't.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Counselor. Does anybody else have any other questions for Eric? All right, great. Eric, thank you so much for your time tonight. I appreciate it.
You got it, Counsel.
All right. Madam Clerk, next item on the agenda, please. Oop, you're muted. Madam Clerk, you're muted.
Sorry. Number five, 2021-66, a resolved continued legal action in opposition to Weymouth Gas Compressor Station.
Thank you. Counselor Kroll?
Thank you, Madam President, and to my fellow colleagues who signed on to this resolution here this evening. You know, this meeting, from a content perspective, there was just a lot of important dialogue. And as I was listening to the discussion on topics not related to the compressor station, I just started to reflect on, you know, sort of the opening line in that resolution dates back to 2015, where, you know, recall, it was the height of a snowstorm, that, you know, I found myself at the Sons of Italy for a public viewing on what then was a 10,000 horsepower proposal to build a gas compressor station in the Florida Basin inside of Weymouth. It was subsequently followed up by another public charrette, if you will, down in Germantown, where I remember bumping into Rep Chan and former Councilor LaFores. And I remember walking out of that meeting, just kind of scratching my head that this thing, this proposal as proposed at the time was much, much bigger than the applicant was leading on to believe. And I share with you, as I sit here tonight, like reflecting on just my time in public service, and I can unequivocally say, this has been the toughest fight that that I've been a part of. And it's unfortunate. It's unfortunate, because at every twist and turn, there's been public opposition, if not outrage, there's been, you know, just noticeable opposition up and down, you know, from elected United States Senators down to, you know, school committee people and everyone in between. As a representative of the Quincy Point District, which is on the other side of Florida Basin, I know that this application affects my people and, but it's not just me. I think that this goes way beyond just the Ward Two section, and this affects us as a city. And I know that, you know, I've been fortunate enough to work with many of you on this item. And I know as a ward counselor, other ward councils can appreciate this specifically, that, you know, regardless of kind of the hand that you dealt, and there was a twist to this application, you know, in the last week or so, my, my conviction, it's not even my opinion, my conviction is that we need to just continue fighting. Now, more than ever, is not the time to cut to commercial and cue up the Christmas music. I think it's we need to just stay focused, keep our head down, and continue to fight this application. I'm not an attorney, nor do I ever, you know, pretend to be. But I could tell you that there's some serious appeals going on, both now at the state and federal level, that are really going to set the table as to what not even today is going to look like with respect to this application, but what this application is going to look like for future generations. It has been a pleasure to work alongside of, you know, the mayor and, you know, Council McCarthy now kind of came into this discussion already taking place. And many of you, like I said, have been supportive throughout the process. But now, more than ever, I really think we're at a critical turning point where we need to continue to fight. I could tell you right now that there's a pretty, pretty lively discussion going on right now in the town of Weymouth with several of our town councilor friends, you know, on the other side of the bridge. And, you know, it's a critical, it's a critical turning point. And I just urge you to continue to support this. It's an extremely important issue to the city of Quincy as a whole, if not beyond. And who knows? I mean, honestly, who knows with the changing political landscape nationally, what this means locally for this particular item. So, you know, my my humble opinion is stay the course, continue to fight this. I don't know if Mr. Walker has anything that he wants to add. Do you want to put a plug in for Solicitor Durkin? He's been our representative on the on the city side on this issue. He did send around essentially kind of a download or memorandum as to what's going on year to date. We also are partnering with, I know many of you are familiar with the Four River Residents Against the Compressor Station, the acronym SPRACS, which is essentially a civic group that, you know, stands in solidarity in opposition to this application. We are working with them in supporting financially, legal counsel to help fight this. And the city of Quincy is an intervenor in this lawsuit as it stands, even though, like I said, there was a twist in the case a week ago, we do still have legal footing with respect to fighting this in opposition. So I'd open it up to any questions or comments, but Madam President, I would ask for a for a roll call and so that the mayor receives this as well. He knows, you know, in my working with Chris Walker, that we're going to be discussing this here tonight. And also, our referral probably appropriate to go to environmental. And with that, I appreciate your indulgence on this.
Do you want to make a motion to pass it as well, and then we can move it into Environmental Committee?
I did. Yeah. Motion, motion approved.
A second.
Second by Counsel McCarthy on the motion. Counsel McCarthy?
Thank you, Madam President. Yeah, just briefly to echo what Counsel Kroll said. He's been in a lot longer fight with it than myself. I know State Rep Chan and former Councilor LaFores were also in the fight also, and to battle it way back, as Brad indicated, in 2015. And it's just a shame that 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 area just seems to, every so many years, something gravitates that way, that just enhances the danger of putting everything in the Four River Basin. Everything seems to be in the Four River Basin. And I know the Weymouth folks are not going to give up, as Counsel Kroll indicated, they're, you know, meeting and meeting and getting ready. We were very all disappointed with Governor Baker on some of the calls early on. I know that Congressman Lynch also has picked the ball up again. And we'll stay at it. We'll stay at it with the process. And I appreciate Counsel Kroll staying on it. And, you know, I know the mayor and the administration, I want to take care of Ward Two and Ward One. I think Germantown and Hausneck have got their share of whatever comes their way out of the Four River Basin over the years, the shipyard, Procter and Gamble, and now, and now this in regards to having enough in that area. But it seems like it falls on deaf ears. So I'm very proud to second this and stay right alongside Counsel Kroll and all my colleagues and and the mayor and everybody in Weymouth and surrounding communities to battle this. So, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Wouldn't anybody else like to speak on this? Okay, with that, so we have a motion made by Counsel Kroll, second by Counsel McCarthy. Madam Clerk, can you call the roll, please?
Counsel Kane.
Yes.
Counsel Kroll.
Yes.
Counsel DeBona.
Yes.
Counsel Harris.
Yes.
Counsel Mahoney.
Yes, sorry.
Counsel McCarthy.
Yes.
Counsel Palmuti.
Yes.
Counselor Phelan.
Yes.
President Liang.
Yes.
Nine members.
The item passes, and we're going to move it to Environmental Committee for a follow-up. Counsel Kroll, thank you for your leadership on this. I appreciate it.
Thank you, everyone.
Madam Clerk, next item on the agenda, please.
Number six, 2020-167, a resolved report from the city clerk on Tuesday's election and changes to future elections.
Thank you. Counsel Phelan?
Thank you, Madam President. I don't want to speak on this tonight. I'll move, I'd like to make a motion to pass it, put it into committee. But I think this last election, we saw a lot of changes in the way we vote. And this, these will be changes that will probably continue on, not just this election, but other elections. And I had an opportunity to get around the county again, and the shining star was the city of Quincy. But I think what we're going to, they did a great job, all the city employees, everyone who did it. But I think we're going to be looking at some real changes next time. And it is a city election. So it is, it is our election the next time. And I think I talked with the clerk, Clerk Crispow, when she agreed that she'd like to give her a report. She's going on a committee with the Secretary of State's office, and she's going to have a lot to report back. And I think it's important that we keep this issue, that everyone understands what's going to happen next year, particularly the vote, the residents of Quincy, who will be voting for new city councillors, school committee and different, different things on the agenda next year. So I'd like to ask, ask the councillors to pass this. And I don't know what committee we could put it in, but I would like to save it for later night and have Clerk Crispow give us a, a report on what we should, we should expect in the upcoming year or next year's election.
Counsel, would you feel comfortable putting it into Oversight?
Yes.
Excellent. Okay. So we have a motion to pass and move to Oversight made by Counsel Phelan. Do we have a second? Second by Counsel McCarthy. Any questions or comments on this item? Great. Madam Clerk, can you call the roll, please?
Counsel Kane.
Yes.
Counsel Kroll.
Yes.
Counsel DeBona.
Yes.
Counsel Harris.
Yes.
Counsel Mahoney.
Yes.
Counsel McCarthy.
Yes.
Counsel Palmuti.
Yes.
Counsel Phelan.
Yes.
President Liang.
Yes.
Nine members.
The item passes, and we'll be moved to Oversight Committee. Thank you, Counsel Phelan. Okay. Approval of previous meeting minutes from October 19th of 2020. Can I get a motion to approve, please?
Motion approved.
Thank you. Motion made by Counsel McCarthy. Do we have a second? Anyone?
Second.
Thanks. Second by Counsel DeBona. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, and the minutes passed. Communications and reports from the mayor, other city officers, and city boards. Madam Clerk?
I do have one traffic request to refer to Ordinance Committee for advertising Ward One, Counsel McCarthy, at a four-way stop sign on Manitav intersecting with Winthrop Street.
Excellent. We'll move that into ordinance. Next, we have unfinished business and proceeding meeting. Okay, seeing none. Reports of committees. Counsel Mahoney?
Okay. So the Ordinance Committee has a few items that need to be passed. All these are traffic requests that were advertised in 1022 Quincy Sun, and we move positive recommendation. The first one is Ward One, Counsel McCarthy, 2020-148, at handicap parking at 13 Plover Road.
Please, we have a motion to approve. Do we have a second?
Second.
Counsel McCarthy, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Moving on to Ward Two, Counsel Kroll, 2020-149, at handicap parking at 25 Ritchie Road.
Please, do we have a motion to approve, Counsel Mahoney?
Motion approved. Yeah, sorry.
Second.
Second by Counsel Kroll. All those in favor?
Aye. 2020-150.
Sorry, Counsel, one second. Are there any?
The head, sorry.
No worries. Okay, item passes. Go ahead.
Okay. Item 2020-150, at handicap parking at 31 Ritchie Road. Motion to approve.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Counsel Kroll. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, item passes.
Okay. 2020-151, at handicap parking at 432 Washington Street. Move for positive recommendation.
We have a motion to approve. Do you have a second?
Second.
Second by Counsel Kroll. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, item passes.
2020-152, remove handicap parking at 179 Kendrick Ave. Motion to approve.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Counsel Kroll. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, item passes.
2020-153, remove handicap loading zone at 28 Dale Ave. Motion to approve.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Counsel Kroll. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any item passes?
Moving on to Ward Three, Counsel Kane, 2020-154, remove handicap parking on South Central Terrace from South Central Ave to 25 North and South Central Ave. Motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Counsel Kane. All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Any item passes?
2020, moving on to Counsel, Ward Four, Counsel Palmuti, 2020-155, at handicap parking at 307 Copeland Street. Motion to approve.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Counsel McCarthy. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
2020-156, remove handicap parking at 20 Penn Street. Motion to approve.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any?
2020-157, remove handicap loading zone at 51 Loring Street. Motion to approve. 2020-157, remove handicap loading zone at 51 Loring Street. Motion to approve.
Okay, do we have a second? Anyone? Thank you. Counsel McCarthy, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, any opposed? Item passes.
Moving on to Ward Five, Counsel Phelan, 2020-158, add handicap parking at 127 Marlborough Street. Motion to approve.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Counsel Phelan. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Item passes.
We have five more. Moving on to Ward Six, Counsel Harish, 2020-159, add handicap loading zone at 36 Ampford Street. I don't can't say that, Ampford Street, sorry. Motion to approve.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Counsel Harris. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, item passes.
2020-160, add handicap parking at 303 Billings Street. Motion to approve.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Counsel Harris. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, item passes.
Um, 2020-161, add handicap parking, um, to 109 Billings Street. Motion to approve.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Counsel Harris. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, 2020, oh, sorry, 2020-162, remove handicap parking at 101 Billings Road. Motion to approve.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Counsel Harris. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
And the last one is Ward Four, Counsel Palmuti, 2020-163, add handicap parking at 65 Lurton Street. Motion to approve.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Counsel Harris. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, item passes. Good day, Counsel Mahoney. Great, thank you. Okay, any other reports of committees? Okay, so we're moving on to presentations of petitions, memorials and remonstrance. Counsel DeBona?
Thank you, Madam President. It's a heavy heart to, um, to say that Larry Norton had passed away at the age of 76. He was a decorated Vietnam veteran, uh, veterans advocate. Um, he was born in Somerville and then moved to Quincy and resided here for 50 years, um, so you can call this home. Um, Mr. Norton was a president of the Quincy Veteran, uh, Vietnam Combat Veterans Combined Armed Forces and was a 51-year member of the Cyril P. Morissette American Legion, um, at 294 as past commander. He was very active in the American Legion where he served in many capacities in the state and national level. Mr. Norton was a proud Vietnam combat veteran serving in the United States Marine Corps, where he was awarded many medals, including the Purple Heart. A proud veteran, Mr. Norton was also past commander of the Quincy Veterans Council. I respected it within the city of Quincy and his passion and selfless commitment to those who have served our nation. Um, he was beloved husband, husband of Ruth Norton, loving father of Pamela Norton and her boyfriend Glenn, Michael Norton of the DPW Department here in the city of Quincy and his wife Julie, Kevin Norton and his wife Tara, and proud pop to Mikey Corbett and Shay. Um, just on a personal note, um, Larry was very instrumental in my, um, political influence here in the city of Quincy. Um, being part of the, uh, Morissette Post. He was very, very active with the veterans up until he just passed away. Um, um, as, as you know, Veterans Day is coming up here on Wednesday. Um, keep, keep his family and your thoughts and his prayers. And I know Larry will be, um, will be sadly missed. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you so much, Counselor. Any other presentations of petitions, memorials or remonstrance? Okay, seeing none, we're going to move on to motions, orders and resolutions. Right, seeing none, scheduling of committee meetings and public hearings. Um, just before we move forward, I just want to confirm with folks um, that when I had originally scheduled this, it was the week of Thanksgiving, so we're going to bump up our, uh, regularly scheduled council meeting um, up to next Monday, which is going to be the 16th. So with that, are there any, um, scheduling of committee meetings? Counsel Mahoney?
Um, thank you, Madam President. Um, on, um, the 16th, I'm going to be having, um, a public hearing and, um, an ordinance committee meeting for, um, 2020-30, which is for the LDA.
Great. And that's going to start at 6:30, correct?
It's going to start at 6:30, yep. And if I could just have removed 2020-09, because there's, that was the first one that came in in 2020-30 was the, um, replacement for it. So if we could just remove that from ordinance as well.
Will do. Thank you. And then just to let folks know, so that's going to start at 6:30, and then we're going to have a public hearing for the tax rate at 7:30. And then our regularly scheduled council meeting will commence at 7:50. And again, that's all on Monday, November 16th. Um, any other scheduling of committee meetings and public hearings? Counsel McCarthy?
Thank you, Madam President. Yeah, just looking forward, I, I guess our next meeting after that is December 7th.
Correct.
Um, I'd like to schedule, uh, Finance Committee meeting on the 7th. I know, uh, I think Counsel Kane also indicated something on the 7th, so however it works out, uh, you know, if, if Counsel Kane has a municipal aggregation, um, committee first, a second, uh, that's okay with me. I was looking for, you know, um, 6:30, whenever, whenever, however the schedule will work out, and I'd like to put, um, Cyril Harriet Ave and, uh, the Beach Coma, uh, on the agenda that night and see if we can take care of that, uh, open space.
You got it. So why don't we schedule, um, Counsel Kane's meeting at 6:30? We will start then. And then immediately following, we'll go right into Finance Committee.
Fine, thank you.
Thank you both. Any other scheduling of committee meetings? Excellent. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Motion adjourned.
Excellent. Thank you all. Have a good night.
Good night, everyone.
Good night, everyone.